All right. Good evening. Thank you, everybody for joining us tonight. Hello, everybody. It seems like it's been a while since we've seen each other. Okay, and Councilman Davis, is he not here tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Davis will be absent this evening.
Okay, for the record, just to make that known that I was not notified, Mr. Davis, for an absence, and this will be the third time that he has not notified me as our code of conduct as explained. So if we can note that for the record, thank you. Just want to remind everybody to silence their cell phones, just so we're not interrupted here. Have to make sure mine are silent, too. Thank you. Okay. So we move on to item number two. This is time for the special presentations and our announcement. This time slot is for informational presentations appointments. In other words, be presented by the city council or the city, or I'm sorry, the city council or to the city council. A oath of office swearing in ceremony for city clerk, Ms. Cindy. I'm gonna butcher this.
Prohaska.
Prohaska. And Assistant City Manager and Acting City Clerk Hogan. And B will be the 16th Annual Read Across America Siskiyou Event, First Five Siskiyou. So Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and have the swearing in of our new city clerk, Ms. Cindy Prohaska. So if we can have Cindy and Reda join us down here.
We won't be here, but you will be here. Five different councils.
We're gonna do it right there. Sign right. Yeah, let's move, move this over a little bit. Yes, yeah. Way to go. My one had fifth grade students. Oh, really? She was a bright shining star. Are we close enough?
Yeah, you got to wait on just fire the wind.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Again, congratulations to Cindy. She's been an awesome addition to our staff here at the city, and we appreciate her taking on this new task and position with us. So congratulations and thank you. Okay, so we're going to item number B2B. This is the 16th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event, First Five Siskiyou.
Thanks so much.
Mrs. O'Gorman.
I have to be a songwriter. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Great.
Oh, and I did miss item number C. Sorry, Highway Three, where I could pavement rehabilitation project update from Miss Catherine Lowe, District Two, PPM. It was down there a little bit. So we do have a representative for Caltrans is gonna be updating us on the Main Street Project and Highway Three and what's going on and what's gonna be going on in the future here coming up. Probably after the season. So we look forward to hearing her update. So sorry about that. So sorry, sorry about that. So Michelle O'Gorman, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And so my name is Michelle O'Gorman, and I'm the Executive Director of the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, who work closely with First Five Siskiyou, where they're boots on the ground. And we all are out tomorrow delivering books all across the county so that every child will take home ages zero to five will take home one of these books tomorrow as our Read Across Siskiyou effort. I already have Mr. McCoy reading. I do have a 12:15 opening. If any of you want to read tomorrow, I'd love to have you at Evergreen School at 12:15. There's somebody dropped out from sickness. So if that's a possibility, you have the book now. So you don't have any good excuses. No, I'm just kidding. And but would you like me to read the proclamation? Or would you like to? What do you think?
Yeah, I think if Mr. Merritt, it would be great if Miss O'Gorman could read. Honestly, I think that's what we've done in the past. Yeah, that works really well.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Where proclamation of the 16th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas children in Siskiyou County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas First Five Siskiyou, in partnership with Siskiyou County Library and the Family and Community Resource Centers, dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy by providing the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare settings, libraries, and online events throughout Siskiyou County on the same day and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. Therefore, the City of Wairika hereby proclaims November 8, 2023, as the 16th anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou. And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Bear, this proclamation, it will be on the consented actual action. So.
You have any questions for me at all?
Maybe not. Council members?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so now item 2C, this will be Highway Three, the Waioka Pavement Rehabilitation Project Update by Ms. I'm sorry, Miss Catherine Catherine Lowe, District Two, PPM. Catherine, are you there?
I am there. I'm I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
It looks like maybe the screen is sharing.
You're not gonna, you're not, we can't see you, but can you see us?
I can see you, and I I think what's happening is I'm seeing the agenda on my screen. And so if you go to page 12 is the beginning of my presentation. If you have it in front of you by any chance.
Ms. Hogan, I'm I'm sorry if you can just, Catherine, hold on one second. Hogan, are we not capable of of having presentations this evening?
She is on her presentations on the screen. The screens with the live stream are not communicating with our monitors right now.
Okay, so this low, I'm not sure if you if you heard that. This is the first meeting we've gone to live stream, and so we're having tough technical difficulties in the where we're not actually able to see the screen share. So if there's any way to present to us by describing exactly where you guys are in the process of the project, I think that would be acceptable.
Okay, wonderful. Do my best. Well, good evening, City Council. My name is Catherine Lowe. I'm the Project Manager for Siskiyou County. I see in the audience, I'm joined by John Hinton, our Area Construction Engineer, and Austin Henry, the Resident Engineer for the project. Austin took some really fantastic photos. I was gonna show him. So we'll just move on. This project is a partnership with the City of Wairika. Caltrans is glad to partner with the City of Wairika to provide this pavement rehabilitation, this Clean California, and some middle mile broadband element. Season one was last summer. We completed segment seven. Right now, we're completing season two. We've completed segment one, two, five, and six. And this is where I have a bunch of photos. So I'll just move through these pretty quickly here. We did complete work on Moonlit Oak Avenue. And we are finishing up segment two. For the rest of the season, we'll be open to two-way traffic. We'll be working with the contractor to grind pavement services. We are going to be installing contrast striping for improved visibility over the winter. And if we have the opportunity, we'll start work on segment three. And then we'll have winter suspension. Next summer, we'll be starting on segment three and segment four. These are both hot mix asphalt pavement placement as well as the Clean California Wairika Beautification Enhancement. For next summer, what to expect in terms of traffic control? We will be placing concrete in the intersections of Highway Three and Moonlit Avenue, Moonlit Oak Avenue, as well as the intersection of Highway Three and Oberlin Road. We will also be upgrading the bridge rail on Wairika Creek Bridge on Highway Three. And then I just have one more slide here that talks about our upcoming projects for the City of Wairika. We are gonna be working on our Wairika Maintenance Station shop next summer. And then in 2030, we have construction planned for the Wairika pavement on Highway Highway Five. I moved through that more quickly than I expected. Are there questions?
Thank you. I'm sure there's questions from the council members. Presentation, Mr. Leber, I'm sorry, I might have a brain fog or now I'm talking to Jason. I was asking him a question. Do I open up a public prayer present, presentation just to answer, right?
Yeah, normally, actually during technically, and we have our attorney here, but normally during our presentations, there's really no interaction with who's providing the presentation. And then there's definitely never a public comment on presentations. But if Mr. Jared feels differently, we certainly will take his advice.
So he concurs. Just for council members, okay. Great. And I'll go first. That's okay. Then I'll, because I just have a real quick question. And Miss Low, when is, when you say summer, when you begin summer project, what month is that? Is it June? Because that's summer. Are you talking about late spring when you start back up for? Is that, I'm sorry, was that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm trying to see if John might know or Austin.
One up.
So typically, our construction season in Siskiyou County, we we figure it's April 1st to November 1st roughly. You know, it's all dependent on weather.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And i- if you guys need a little clarification on, you know, if you had the slides, you'd be able to tell she talked a lot about segments.
Yeah, we have them right here.
Okay, if you, you know, because it's kind of hard to understand if you understand what the segments are.
Yeah, we have all the pictures in the segments, I think, right? Everybody found out those. Okay, yeah. So we were looking at those as you were talking about them. They just can't see them on the screen. Unfortunately, we apologize to the audience, but we do have them in front of us for council members. So we are looking at the beautiful color maps in the season three and the stagings and all that and what that entails. Okay, so when she says summer, you guys say April 1st through November. So April 1st, you're gonna be. And is that, did you say, I'm sorry, couldn't hear, season three and four coming down?
Season four is a bad word. So we just said season three.
Okay.
We hope there is no season four.
Oh, why didn't I hear season four? I'm sorry.
Yep. And with that, you know, we we still want to do a little bit of work through the winter, like some of the drainage stuff. Hoping to maybe do some sidewalks. We have a lot of sidewalks left to do through town. So if the weather lets us lets us do that, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to do small scale type operations through the winter.
Okay, and I, that's my final question, but I just have one final request for you guys for next year. And I'm sure Mr. McCoy is going to agree and probably hasn't his notes is that we feel that the City of Wairika and myself and our citizens were not informed of some spontaneous road closures that happened. And so it caught our citizens off guard. And as you're probably aware, you probably heard from Mr. Ledbetter because he heard from me and our council members and our residents. So we just hope for a little better communications when there's gonna be road closures. The Oberlin was a big big mishap for us when that was closed in that section. So if we could just have better communication. That would be great. So we can let our citizens know, and we were cut off guard as well. So.
Sure. So for your information, just on that Oberlin Road, that was news to us as well.
Okay.
And so we we immediately shut the contractor down.
Okay.
Didn't work the next couple of days, you know, because they 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 spontaneously did it without our knowledge.
Okay.
So we we got them lined back out.
Okay, I don't know. Maybe I was made aware of that. But it's been a lot going on for the summer for you guys as well and for us as a city. So great, thank you. So I'll go to council members. I'll go to my right. So I'll go to Councilman Davis. I mean, I'm sorry, Baker. I was looking at his seat. I do that a lot. I'm sorry.
So I just want to say thank you to Caltrans. Actually, I receive a lot of positive comments from residents about how excited they are to see the work going on. They think that it brings a certain atmosphere of excitement and to the city. And I just also remind people to just be patient. It's gonna be beautiful when the work is done. But I just want to say that I appreciate the hard work that you guys are doing. And sometimes I know that it can be a thankless job. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate that. You know, we do get a lot of negativity. You know, it is very intrusive to the public. We understand that. But when it's done, it's gonna be really nice. You know, this is, this is a, you know, what 50, 60 million dollar project. When is Wairika gonna see that much money spent in this town ever again? You know, probably not in my lifetime, you know, so it's it's a, and we're just now getting into, you know, the concrete we've done on each end of the, it it's the most intrusive. You know, it's harder to do. We're gonna do some work next year around Moonlit Oaks and Oberlin. That's gonna be a little intrusive. But then it's it's asphalt paving for the rest of the project sidewalks. And we're gonna do some decorative sidewalks. We're gonna do some decorative lighting. So it'll be some things that make it make it look really nice.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. And you thought you had some hard decisions. You should solve this, the previous well, three of us and the previous two up here deciding on lighting.
Yeah.
Remember that?
That's a tough one. I'm I'm an engineer. I don't pick colors. I don't pick anything that's, you know, supposed to be.
Well.
Even tougher when it's brought to you on a deadline and they say, gotta be done by now.
And we had to go up these charts up and down, but it was, yeah.
Yeah.
I joke, but it was, it's gonna be beautiful. And Council Baker is right. It's gonna be beautiful once it's done. And I did remind our citizens, I'll remind everybody here in our audience to please be patient. It's made a beautiful project when it's all done. And if you haven't seen, I go to their site. I don't know if all the renderings are on there when it's gonna we had graphics of color, just everything what it's gonna look like, and it's gonna change all of downtown. It's gonna be beautiful when it's done with the lighting and the the trees, the decorative, this everything is gonna be beautiful. So so I didn't want to, I want to pay back her by not saying thank you so much for our citizens and for me, and it'll be beautiful. And I just don't want to end on a negative note. Councilman McCoy.
Miss Low, are you still on?
I'm here. Yes.
Can you tell me when the skid test will be done on the current concrete that has not been ground yet?
Miss Low probably does know the answer to that question.
Please let Miss Low respond, Mr. Hinton. Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so I had this discussion with RE Austin, and I'm checking my notes right now. I I don't actually have that written down. And if you, John or Austin, do you happen to know?
If you would like Mr. Hinton to respond, I'm fine with that. I don't want him usurping your time without you asking.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, John. Thank you.
We skid test today.
You skid test today?
Mm-hmm.
So you were able to skid test it quicker than down at, when you had to wait three weeks to skid test down. Okay.
Yeah, we ordered up. It's a little easier, you know, skid, skid testing is there's really one guy in the state of California that does the skid testing. And so you have to, when we know that we need it, we can order it up and happen in time. Yep.
And Mr. Hinton, I am directing my questions to Miss Low.
Okay.
Because she is the agenda, because a lot, because the last time you and I met, you kicked me out of the meeting, and then you called the city manager, told him you didn't want me back. So
Okay.
But, you know, I appreciate what Caltrans is doing, but the communication is poor at best. That's why I came to the meetings. I've been invited by Caltrans. Again, you kicked me out. I, we, we need better communications. Unfortunately, for me, I do get some, I get some great communication from people that are happy about it. But the majority of the calls that I get, or when people stop me, they're very concerned about the lack of communication on the part of Caltrans, excuse me. How do you plan to, what's your, what, Miss, Miss Low, I guess I'll direct it to you. What is, what is the PIO's office for Caltrans Department, I guess, is it would be Department Two? What's your plan to improve relations with our community next year? I I realize this isn't a Wairika project. Mr. Hinton actually told me that this project is not about Wairika. It's a state of California project. And, you know, for Caltrans, I I understand that, but how are you going to communicate better with our citizens and our businesses?
So, yeah, so I appreciate the question. We get a lot of a lot of people reach out to us in different ways. Sometimes they reach out to to the same PIO officer that they've always reached out to, which maybe isn't working on this project. So there is always gonna be a little bit of work on our end to be sure that we're connecting them with the right information. But as far as improvements, I think we did improve in just in the last couple of months. I think things got really busy in the middle of the summer. And so there was a lot of opportunity to improve. We have updated our website and I can reach out to PIO one more time to find out if they think we have more ways to improve.
You're not a PIO then?
I am not. I'm not a Public Information Officer.
What's your status with with Caltrans?
I'm the Project Manager.
Okay, um, thank you very much. So basically, what I've been doing as people are reaching out to me, I just tell them to call the Reading Office and direct their concerns, their complaints, their issues, and their praise as well to the Reading Office. Does that, would that be appropriate then?
Yes, that is appropriate. And then I can also make sure that you have my direct number. Most of my projects, my number is given out freely.
Yeah, no, I do not. Can you tell me, Miss Low, when the northbound Highway Three from Moonlit Oaks to Caltrans on the east side will have curbing? So there's not a drop off there as you turn off of Moonlit Oaks going west and you start going north on Highway Three?
Okay, so that is, is that within the intersection of Highway Three and Moonlit Oak?
The intersection going about down to Caltrans, probably about 150 feet. I noticed drains, there's a drain installed that sits about 40 or 30 feet off of the off of the roadway. And so I'm assuming there's gonna be concrete there at some time. Well, is that gonna be done by? I mean, we're talking about concrete being done through the winter. I don't, although I don't know how. You're gonna do it through the winter here unless you pour it hot and somebody sits out there. But how are you going to, what's gonna be done there?
Okay, John, are you familiar with this specific location?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. And if you can't answer him.
We're we're shoulder bedding that tomorrow. There's no concrete in that section. It's just graded to drain to those grades.
So it's just gonna be dirt?
It'll be aggregate and dirt, yes.
And so and and so is there, is there gonna be a channel that connects the road to the drainage that's there?
It'll just be sheet flow.
It'll just be what?
Sheet flow. So it just flows off the roadway.
Okay, thank you.
No channelized.
And can you explain to the council, Miss Low, how you intend to pour concrete in weather that is between minus 12 degrees in our winters and up to, say, 32 degrees during the day? I'm assuming you got to pour it real hot, and then you gotta put blankets on it, and you gotta just sit on it to put a heater underneath there?
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to John.
Okay.
So the only concrete we'll be pouring during the winter will be potentially sidewalks.
Yes.
And at this point, we we've actually stopped. That will be with our our conventional concrete mix. And we utilize concrete blankets to protect the concrete. We have specifications that tell us when we need to protect that concrete.
Then when the concrete starts to break up because it was poured at incorrect temperature, will Caltrans be the one coming back to replace it, or will the city be required to replace it?
If everything's done according to specifications, the concrete's safe.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I don't agree with you, but, um. And so, you know, again, in my communication with people that are working out on the job, which Mr. Hinton can't provide me or can't keep me from doing as I am walking along, or if they ask a question, he cannot deny me the ability to talk to them. He can in his office, but not when I'm out in the public. Are we firm? How firm are we, Miss Low, on that this project is going to be wrapped up by next October? How far, are we 95% sure? Are we 80% sure?
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to John as well.
What's that?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, go go ahead. I didn't hear you.
She's directed Mr. Hinton to ask her a question.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and defer to John on that one.
Thank you.
So we have contract working days into October of next year. If the contractor has difficulties, then it would be liquidated damages, which we would charge the contractor if they exceeded their working days.
Okay, so the question was, what percentage are you, you think you're gonna finish on time? Is it a 50/50? Is it, you think, are you 99% sure? Are you 90% sure?
I'm just telling you what the contract is. I I don't know what'll happen. If I, if I tell you it's 95%, and then I'm wrong, then you'll come back and.
No, I'm just asking what you think, realistically speaking.
I think we have I think we have contract working days, uh, to October of next year.
And you can't communicate to us what your thoughts are, based on the best case scenario?
I'm just telling you what the contract says.
I, I'm asking you what you're, you're, you're my contact here in Siskiyou County, Mr. Hinton, I'm asking you. What you were thinking, you're the one that runs those meetings down there, uh, at the north end of town, you have an idea on this, you don't need to be looking at other people. Over here, they're not gonna, they're not gonna jump in with you, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm only asking you and being blunt now.
If the contractor works until October.
Yep.
And he hasn't finished, then we charge him liquidated damages beyond that, that's the contract.
And then they come back, somebody comes back next year and finishes up.
Correct.
The following year, the fifth year, or fourth year, okay, okay. Um, again, Ms. Low, I'm gonna, I'm, I, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate Mr. Hinton's time, I am going to implore you. That your communication has been poor, 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 even though you. Think, and I appreciate that, that it's gotten better this year, it has not. And so please do something to communicate to our businesses, to our citizens. Because they are very, very tired, and they call the city and want to berate us. And they do berate us because they think we're running this project, and then I tell them, we have nothing to say. This project is strictly about the state of California, it's not about Wairega, you need to call Caltrans. So I'm gonna leave now, but I'm gonna implore you in Reading to do something up here. To be able to communicate more to our citizens, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Councilman White. Councilman K.
After all that statement, there's not much I need to state, other than this has been. Uh, a long project that we've, uh, us as a council have actually been involved in for a number of years. So it'll be, be nice to have it done, I know it'll be beneficial for. The city of Wairega, for our citizens, and for our businesses, and just to remind you, the businesses that. There is on our, we're gonna be discussing, um, this, but, um, on the agenda, but. This is, uh, there's help, for financial help, for the, um, problems that this has caused for some of the businesses, so keep in mind that. Um, Quentin from Siskiyou Economic Development is going to be there to help out businesses around town. That have the financial difficulties from this, um, from this inconvenience, um. A lot of these, a lot of people around here that were back in the nineties, lived here back in the nineties, they knew, um, what was coming. I was one of those people, I've been here all my life. Um, this is nothing new, we, we overhauled the, the Highway Three back in, um, ninety, I can't remember, ninety-four or something like that, I think it was. And totally regit up then, and it was a major, um, inconvenience for all the businesses, but everybody worked through it, and then it made. Wairega a better and stronger place, so, um, the main thing I can gather from this is, like what Mr. McCoy said. The main thing is communication, um, because we do need to make sure that, not only for the citizens, but for our law enforcement, it's the main thing there. I'm not gonna go into quite the details as Mr. McCoy did, but he voiced his opinion very strongly, and I appreciate that.
People voice to me.
No, and I, I appreciate it, don't, you know, um, but I, I think more than anything, it's for our law enforcement, for our emergency services. That really need to know what's going on, because that, like you said, what happened, they shut, and they shut the contractor down, thank you, because. That was a huge inconvenience for our law enforcement that day, that was not a good scene, when they got trapped in their own spot, and they couldn't even go. Respond to calls and stuff, so that's a huge thing, but you corrected it, and I thank you, and I think, I think since then, uh. Caltrans has figured out that the communication needs to be opened up, and I don't get to go into detail, so thank you for trying, and. It's a huge endeavor, and I couldn't even fathom trying to take on this, this endeavor, so. Thank you for doing this, and I think, like I said, Wairega's gonna be a better place after it's all said and done, so thank you. You continue on pushing forward as fast as you can go.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, Councilman K. All right, I think that's it, thank you, uh, Mr. Hinton, it's not always easy, I know, um. I take the hits too. So we all do, we all do, and, um, and, uh. Just one thing is, it is about the city of Wairega, it isn't just about the state of California, Caltrans, it is about city of Wairega and the beautification of that project, so I don't wanna get that. Thinking that's just, you guys are going around saying this is your project, this is your job, we don't have any say so, because we have, and we have for years.
It is our project, I mean, it is ours, uh, the, the biggest problem, Mr. McCoy is very upset about the meeting. He was trying to direct our contractor, we can't do that.
Let him talk, Mr. McCoy.
We have, we have a contractor we followed, he was invited to the meeting, he was disruptive, I asked him to.
No.
Mr. McCoy, Mr. McCoy, Mr. McCoy, order, order, but let him. He was asking the question, I, he has answered my question, so I'm gonna let him speak. I'm not gonna say it again. I asked him a question, he was responding. Okay. Mr. Hinton.
Yeah, so it is about the city and is about, um, the state, it's a huge project, um. If there's poor communication, we're doing everything, we have a staff of public information officers that. Uh, are one phone call away, they don't always know everything that's going on, but they'll call us and they'll get the, the scoop. You know, there are things that happen, like the closure of Oberlin, it's, um, it's not perfect. We broke two water lines last week, you know, it, it's not perfect, we run into gas lines all the time. Uh, sewer, you know, it's not perfect, but we try to do our best, so.
All right, thank you, and we look forward to better communication and getting the project moving forward, and, um. We thank you for your time, and, um, thank you, Ms. Low, we appreciate. You guys have a good evening.
Yeah.
Okay, I think my battery, I think my battery died. Yeah, my, my screen, my computer died, so I gotta go to the guy died. Okay. That's good, I'll go the old fashioned way. Um, number two, public comment, uh, item number three, this is public, public participation is welcome, invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda, as well as other items not included on the. Not included on the regular agenda, if your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda. Please address the city when that item is open for public comment. The city, city, I'm sorry, the city requests that persons addressing the city council. Refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken. By the city during public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited by discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the post agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda, as well as, as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under public hearing or new business sections of the agenda. Please address the city council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium, the podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the city council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum seven copies, these become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council isn't able to take any action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff. For follow-up or placed on a future agenda. Public comment is not intended to be an, uh, question and answer, period for conversations with council or city staff. Do you have any public comments? I guess so, we have somebody standing up there, ready to go, good evening, sir.
Hello. Hello, I'm Mike Griffin Tini from Wairega, and I'm interested in local history. Uh, that is why I spoke before you all, about a month ago, or maybe a little bit more, trying to build some support. For the notion of re-displaying the county gold collection, or at least what's left of the collection after the robbery. Eleven years ago, I believe. Um, both Bob Caster and I spoke before you, um, a while ago. And, um, since that time, virtually all of the historical-minded organizations within the city. Um, including the Friends of the Museum, of Siskiyou County Museum, Siskiyou County Historical Society, Wairega Preservation. Siskiyou County Genealogical Society, and Wairega and Richmond have all sent letters of. Support for the notion of re-displaying what's left of the county gold collection. Of course, those letters were sent to the board of supervisors, not to, to you. In addition, we have a petition drive, I've never tried this before, but it's been interesting to start a petition drive. Um, collecting signatures, uh, in downtown Wairega, and those petitions will be submitted to the. Board of Supervisors very soon also. So I just wanna thank you, I know it's on your agenda for today, to take action. Um, so, uh, thank you very much for any support that you would provide. To encourage the county to protect our historical legacy, and that's how I see that, this is part of our historical legacy. And, uh, so thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adjust automatically? It's weird.
It doesn't do it automatically.
It won't take too long. Good evening, city council members, um, my name is Melissa Cummins, and I know a couple of you. It's a really cool technology to have, um, so I wanted, I came tonight to hear the, um, presentation from Caltrans. Um, and for those of you that don't know me, I am the executive director for the Siskiyou County Local Transportation Commission. So I live in Wairega as well, so I'm a resident, but I'm here on behalf of my, um, job. And so I just wanted to, um, emphasize on the communication issue that was brought up this evening, um, we became aware of it, I actually saw a post the night. Before the road was supposed to be closed, and I traveled that intersection, and so we immediately got in touch with, um, city staff, Caltrans. And so I wanted to encourage residents, if they're, um, not already following, um, Caltrans District Two Facebook. They have been, um, since we had that conversation with them, saying you have to fix this problem, this is a serious concern for us. They have been really good about posting closures on there, or different sections that they're working on, in addition, I monitor their Facebook page. And I share it to the commission's Facebook page, so I also wanted to mention that, so anybody that's not following those two pages. Should definitely get on there, because anything that's actually county-related, for me, I'm posting that out there, so if there's upcoming open houses about. Transportation-related stuff, that will all be on our Facebook page, and then through District Two as well, so. Um, pleasure to meet you all, and I will actually be back probably in the next few months, we have some projects coming up that we'll be working on in conjunction with your staff. So you'll see me again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cummins.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Anderson. Uh, thank you for placing on the agenda the motion to approve a letter from the city council in support of re-displaying the remaining gold. There are immense benefits of displaying our remaining gold in a safe, secure location. By showcasing our city's golden heritage, we can attract tourists, boost local economy, and instill pride in our community. The allure of our gold rush past will draw visitors, providing a unique experience that connects them to our history. This is a great opportunity, striking a balance between preserving our heritage, boosting tourism, and being financially responsible. Despite past thefts, cost-effective security measures can be implemented to protect these artifacts. Modern surveillance and secure display solutions are affordable and readily available. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanna ask, uh, the assistant city manager a quick question before Mr. Martin comes up, and that is, do we have anybody that is online? That it's requesting to do public comment? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Jay Martin. I am the owner of Siskiyou News, and Wairega News Facebook pages. I just wanna take a second and say hello, I, uh. Tend to stay out of city council meetings, it's, once you go to one, you kinda commit yourself, and there's a lot of them in Siskiyou County. Um, anyway, I wanted to reach out and let you know that. You're invited to, uh, participate in November eighteenth at the United Methodist Church. Thanks to your city manager, Jason, that put me in contact with a pastor. Um, that's offered to open up the services, so Father's House is coming down from Edford and doing. A full Thanksgiving dinner on the eighteenth, the Saturday at five o'clock. And, uh, it'll be interesting, good, bad, ugly. Invite you to, uh, see some of, and talk to some of the people that are on the streets. It is very interesting, sometimes you do learn a lot. Um. With that, I'm here for you, you know, I try to, uh. Put out important information that's relevant for your community, and I'll leave it at that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Hey there.
My name's Molly Almac, I live in Wairega.
Hi, Molly.
So since we're on invitations, I thought I'd go next. I'm here to invite you to a film, same day, November eighteenth, from two to four. At, uh, the Wairega Library. But before I get into that, I also want, I want to thank you for signing the, um. Twenty twenty-three proclamation for United Against Hate Week. And I just wanted to bring to your attention this poster. Which is the Californian United Against Hate Week, and, um, this is from the Civil Rights. Department, they, that commission has a campaign against hate. Uh, you probably can't see it, but all the counties are outlined. So we can, uh, color in Siskiyou County, we're doing United Against Hate Week, they have a toolkit for all cities. To help them put on United Against Hate. So this year, uh, Friends of the Library. Are hosting a film, and I'm gonna pass around invitations to, uh, all the council members and. Um, you, attorney, and Jason.
Thank you.
And, uh. This is a PBS film that's done for Not in Our Town, which is a national foundation to. Help communities fight hate and find ways to communicate peacefully and collaboratively. Uh, we all know that we live in a lot, in violent times, where there's a lot of divisiveness. And, and people take sides, unwillingness to listen. Uh, this film will really, um, show that if we choose not to have the difficult discussions. With our community, if we choose not to look under the surface of what's happening in our community. And, um, you know, we do that at our peril, if we don't try to build bridges between our different factions. So I hope that you will come, I feel that, uh, the community is. Is relying on you to participate, expecting you to be there, there will be a discussion panel, and our mayor has, uh. Generously accepted an invitation to be on that panel. I'd just like to end with something that I heard after church, uh, Sunday, from another church member. And, um, it's kinda goes along with, the gentleman just said, it's about our homeless population, this person I know from church. Works for Behavioral Health, that has been very, very involved in trying to find temporary and permanent. Shelter for our unhoused community, um, and I was told that. At night, vehicles go up there between Behavioral Health and, uh, the encampment there, and flashlights. Honk horns and throw rocks, and I see nod and nods, and I'm sure that several of you council members know this. Or all of you know this, because I know that you've been very involved in trying to help the homeless of our community. And have found roadblock after roadblock, but that kinda activity, that's a hate act. And that's vigilante action as well, is somebody in the community taking upon themselves to harass. A group of people they don't think belong here, so, um. I really hope that you all attend. This other uh invitation sounds pretty good, too, but um. We'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Hello.
Hey there.
I'm uh Hannah Johnson, and um I'm kind of following up with Molly. I'm also inviting you all to. The screening that we're having at the library, which is just a couple feet over that way. Um, so yeah, um, I just first would maybe want to invite everyone to take a big breath. I know that tonight has been really intense, and uh I personally have felt intensity in the room. And I just want to first just offer everyone to take a big breath. I guess I need to do that. Um, so yeah, I'm thirty-two years old. Um, I was born in Medford, but uh I grew up in this town, Wairika. On South Oregon Street, just a few blocks down. Um, in fact, I'm sure many of you know my home and my parents. Um, my childhood home is right next to the old courthouse, the jail, the funeral chapel, and the fire hall. That's how we know we live in a small town, right? Um, yes, so I uh I went to Evergreen Elementary, Gold Street, Jackson Street. And I graduated Wairika High School in two thousand nine. Um, I was very active in the arts community in Siskiyou County. I started dance at the YMCA in the nineties. I danced at Theater Street Dance, which was located on Minor Street. There's two locations, and I danced at both of those. Um, I also was uh very involved with SPAC and the Wairika Community Theater. When I was applying to colleges, I wrote about how growing up in a small town, I couldn't wait to. Immerse myself in different cultures. I am Jewish, and growing up in Wairika with little to none Jewish community was very isolating. Um, in the fifth grade, my mother and I taught my class about Hanukkah. And then the following year, a boy in my class drew swastika on my paper. Now, little me did not know what to do. I was scared and confused. I thought this boy was my friend. And I share this small moment, just to show that one small act of hate can have a lasting impact. I share this because hate is hate, no matter the size or whatever it is. In fact, according to the FBI, hate crimes are severely underreported. And in um. In my research for this, I stumbled upon this wonderful organization called Cal Matters. And Cal Matters just published an article in September of this year with the title. From Films to Counseling: How California is Spending Ninety Million to Fight Hate. Hate crimes were up twenty percent in two thousand twenty-two. With those against transgender, Muslim, and black people increasingly, increasing. But the state is also spending more than any other to combat such crimes, including a hotline, state commission. And new rounds of grants to community organizations. I come here knowing that Wairika, I came to the last meeting, I should say. And I was very disheartened. Um. The. The idea of what is hate being presented. Um, and to, to define what hate is was kind of um mind-boggling to me. That, that was the discussion, but just because of that, I have a definition of hate. A hate incident is a non-criminal act that involves biased, motivated hostility and. Sorry, let me read that again. Involves biased, motivated hostility in which a victim's real or perceived race, ethnicity, religion, ancestry. National origin, disability, gender, or sexual orientation is substantial motivating factor. Some examples of hate incidents can include derogatory names, bullying, hate mail, or refusing service. I come here today. Because I need the Wairika City Council members behind me. Wairika Stands United Against Hate needs Wairika City Council members behind the organization. We need your support. We need the support of the Wairika Police Department. And in order to get that support, I understand that conversations need to happen. Is that?
That's you.
That's me? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anybody else for a public comment? Anybody on? Nobody online? Okay.
No, they're online, no comments.
Okay, thank you. And another public comment from the audience? All right. Good item number four. This is the consent agenda. All my matters listed. Sorry, I'll start over. Sorry about that. Okay, start over here. Item number four, this is a consent agenda. All matter, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial. And will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from October eighth, twenty twenty-three, through October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. B, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. C, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven, declaring city-owned property APN number. O-six-two, O-three-one, dash, one-nine-zero as surplus land. D, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two, purchase-sell agreement of the Carnegie Library. E, approval proclamation of the sixteenth annual Read Across Siskiyou Event. F, motion proof letter, support for the Siskiyou County Gold Display. G, motion to approve the restructure of police sergeant position to a lieutenant position. Before use the recommended city council action, the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council. Of the city of America as presented, what are the wishes of the council?
Mister Mayor, I cannot participate in A and C. Uh, I have a possible financial conflict on A, and on C, I have property that um is on that, on that uh item. It's close to that item. Participate on A and C, just so you know, I could, so I can, the reason why. Mister Attorney can uh tell you that um, that way I can sit in on this vote. I can still vote on the rest of it.
Okay.
That's correct. This conflicts of interest um preclude him from participating in those items, but because they're on the consent agenda. The rest of the council can vote upon those matters.
Okay, so you uh, Mister Keg will be, you're accusing yourself from the consent agenda items, number, our letters A and C, correct? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor, I would request that item G, the motion to approve the restructure of the police sergeant position to a police lieutenant position. Be polled. I have some questions.
Okay, and we have a request from Councilman Baker. We're going to uh poll item uh G for discussion.
Don't need a second on that bullet, or no?
I don't believe so. I think it can be pulled by any council member, and I would just, if there's no other things getting pulled, I'd just advocate to the mayor that. Um, you can have two different votes now on the consent. One will include council member Keg, and one will not. And then we could um address the item that was polled, unless there's more items to be polled.
Okay, well, let me start with um, this is consent agenda um. For the three of us, I guess, would be for items um. For the three of us, for items B.
Or items A and C for the three of you. Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were pulling your. Oh, didn't you? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You're pulling yourself uh from that. Okay. Um, okay, so we'll uh, send a giant agenda item for the three of us will be um. Items A through um.
A and C.
Didn't you say you're pulling yourself from A and C, though? So we're voting on the rest, yeah. Oh, no, I was going to the three of us first for the, all of it. For items A through, yeah.
Or you would have, Mister Mayor, you would have um, there would be a vote, somebody would make a motion for items A and C.
Yes.
That did not include Mister Keg making vote, and then you would have items B, D, E, and F.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All of you, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. All messed up. I got confused. Okay. I wrote it down wrong. I was following what you were telling me, but I'm sorry. Okay, okay. What are the wishes of the council?
Mister Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve consent agenda items A and C.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion for Councilman Baker and a second from uh. Councilman McCoy. Go for roll call, Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
And um, I will be I. Okay, the motion passes on uh those items. Okay, so now we'll go through for um. Number four for. The remaining.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, now you would have items uh Mister Keg can participate in, items B, D, E, and F.
Yeah, BD and F, I'm sorry, because I had it written down wrong from him. Okay, okay, great. So items uh for A. BD and F, what are the wishes of the council?
Uh, this is Councilman McCoy. I will make the motion uh. To adopt the consent agenda of the city council, city Wairika, as presented in only items B, D, E, and F. We've already done A and C, and G is being dropped from the consent agenda.
Okay, I have the motion from Councilman McCoy. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
And the council are second from uh Councilman McCoy. Okay, I'm doing good tonight. All right, I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
And yes, so that motion passes. Okay, then we'll go to um. Item number four, G, this is going to, this is, item is polled for discussion um. For the restructure of the police sergeant position um presented by uh the lieutenant, or to a uh lieutenant position. Answer any questions as our chief police, Mister Gilman.
Point of order.
Sure.
If we're, if we're pulling it right now, won't we put it back on the agenda in two weeks? And we'll hear the chief of police's report at that time, because we're not going to vote on it. It's obviously not going to be something we're going to vote on tonight, so. Uh, because we, we've removed it. So I.
Pulled it just for discussion.
She pulled the discussion.
Discussion only.
Yeah.
Not pulling it permanently.
So we, we still want to vote on it tonight?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, my mistake. Thank you.
Hello, Council, Chief Gilman. So what can I help you with as the questions?
Councilman Baker.
Thank you. So um, I appreciate um your staff report. I just had some questions about the actual fiscal impact to the department and to the city. Um, I like to see um. Numbers and sense. Um, so I'm just curious about the actual um fiscal impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
In a nutshell, the fiscal impact is basically point three percent less. It's a savings for me. Um, the management position, which is the lieutenant's position, is not an overtime position. Managers do not get paid for working overtime. There is an exception for like a fire or something like that where the state reimburses for time. I don't get paid for that, but the tenants would. But as far as how the city offers, there's no pay. So the increase in pay to be lieutenant is offset by the sergeant that's getting the overtime. So what we did was we took all the sergeants, added up their overtime to average what we spend on overtime a year. And then we took the lieutenant's position, and we found basically a point three percent decrease. It's about seven hundred and eighty dollars. It's, it's so minimal. Either way, but it is on the saving side, but it is, it's very minimal.
Um, thank you. I appreciate that. And I just uh want to clarify for myself. I want to make sure that I understand this. That um, you are taking a sergeant's position um and um. Turning that into a lieutenant's position, so there's not going to be an unfilled sergeant position. You're converting that to a lieutenant position. Is that correct? Thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions.
No problem. It's a good question.
Thank you, Councilman Baker.
Anything else?
And she answered my, that's a question I had for the second part of her, so I don't need to ask it now.
I just would like to uh thank Councilmember Baker, because she did make us aware that she had questions about this item. And we uh conveniently then were able to uh have responses ready for those questions, so that's very helpful. So I just want to let the rest of the council know. Obviously, you can always pull items off the consent agenda, and if we can't answer the questions, we can come back in two weeks. But it is extremely helpful to give us the heads up, and so I'm very thankful.
Uh, Councilman McCoy or uh Keg, do you have any questions for um Chief Gilman?
Councilman Baker covered it very well. Yep.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so now we go back to item four G. This is the motion to approve the restructure of. Police Sergeant Position to uh Police Lieutenant Position. What are the wishes of the council?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make um the motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Baker, and I will go ahead, and I will make the second this time. I never do, but I will this time do something. Out of the ordinary for me, so I will second the motion. So I have a first uh motion from Councilman Baker and a second from me and Mayor Middleton. What are the wishes of the council? I'll go to roll call. Councilman Keg.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Aye.
And I. And the motion passes? Great. Level business. No public hearing. Item number seven, this is new business, is city manager. A, this is title, CDBG, Main Street Construction Mitigation Small Business Grant Program Guidelines. Quentin Gaddy, Program Director uh for Business Development, is here to discuss the Wairika CB, CDBG. Main Street Construction Mitigation Small Business Grant Program Guidelines. This program is made possible with funding from the California Department of Housing and. Community Development. Good evening, Quentin.
Good evening, Council. So uh, what you have in front of you today are the program guidelines for the upcoming. Wairika CDBG Main Street Construction Mitigation Small Business Grant. What these guidelines are, much like the Constitution of the United States, are a living, breathing document. So right now, this is the first version of them, the first draft. And um, we did meet with uh Finance Committee last week, and they did have a few suggestions and changes to be made. So the guidelines that you have before you are uh, uh, did take into account those changes. And um, what these guidelines do is they basically lay down the rules of the road for the program in terms of who's eligible. What is the program fixing to do? What are the amounts uh, um, and what are the intended use of the program? And so just sort of provide an overview for the public and for the city council what this program is. Um, last year, we, well, the city applied for Community Development Block Grant. For a Economic Development Business Assistance Program. And these programs uh provide direct financial assistance to small businesses. Um, and there's basically, you know, one requirement, and that's that. Every business who receives funds has to either create or retain a job that is held by a load of moderate income individual. So if we're going to get into specifics of what this program will entail. Is we're going to be looking at setting up what's called an impact area, a defined impact area, that's going to encompass three hundred feet. In both directions uh from the area of Main Street at West Side Road, and so that's, that's the road on the other side of, of Wally World, Walmart. Um, all the way down to Montague Road at the intersection of I-five, so past the old Casa Ramos building. And so any businesses that were within three hundred feet of this area. That had been impacted by the Main Street Construction Program, what we heard about from Caltrans earlier. Uh, can be eligible to apply for financial assistance through this program. Um, there are some uh requirements that they have to be, you know, maintaining a commercial storefront. So that's going to be one. They have to have twenty-five or fewer employees, and they can't be engaged in any business activity. That would contradict uh any kind of federal statute or law. This could be like cannabis businesses, for example, or anything of a prurient nature. Um, how the program's going to work is, is really kind of structured after the PPP program that came out during COVID nineteen. And so we're going to be providing up to three. And so we're going to be providing up to three months of operating expenses for businesses who apply. Uh, this will include primarily payroll expenses as the first bucket of costs.
One second, please. Can we halt, um, conversations and audience, please? I cannot hear my, um, presenter. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, the second bucket of eligible costs will include facilities costs. So these are things like mortgage or lease for the actual commercial storefront. And the third will be, um, utilities. This is everything from, from gas, propane, electricity, internet, whatever you need to be able to conduct your business. And, um, there are going to be, you know, some hefty requirements for businesses in terms of the paperwork, being able to demonstrate that they are a business. They'll have to have an active City Wairega Business License. They can't have any code violations. Um, and they'll have to have some sort of direct impact from the construction activity. We're not going to be allowing for indirect impacts. Um, so, uh, businesses will have to provide things like tax returns, um, payroll reports that show, you know, their employees on payroll, copies of mortgage lease. Cause we'll have to verify that all these costs are eligible expenses. Uh, cause this program won't allow for any waste, fraud, or abuse. And so while there is a little bit of a hurdle in terms of the paperwork and the requirements, uh, I do just want to inform, uh, members of the public and, and the council that any business who is interested in applying can seek assistance through the Small Business Development Center. We will work with businesses one-on-one to help them complete the application. We're not going to say, hey, you can't figure it out. Sorry. You know, no, I will go to your place of business. I will sit down with you and I will help you complete the application. Um, there may be some bottlenecks because every business that is, uh, uh, eligible will, will have to be registered on SAM.gov. This is a federal database, uh, maintained, um, by the government that basically ensures that any entities are not debarred. Uh, entities could be debarred for being delinquent on their taxes. Um, if they're delinquent on child, uh, uh, support payments, uh, if they have any instances of fraud or, um, uh, any kind of, uh, past legal history with anything financial. Um, but once businesses receive all of that, complete all of that, submit an application, like I said, they'll be eligible for up to three months of operating expenses. And so this document right here just sort of lays down, you know, who is eligible, what is going to be the process for issuing funds. We're going to cap awards at either $35,000 or three months of expenses, whatever figure is lower. So let's say if we had, you know, every grant was a full award of 35K, we'd be able to serve 19 businesses. It's, it's most likely that a lot of those awards are going to be smaller than that. So we'll be able to serve more than 19 businesses. And, um, all you guys see right now are, are the guidelines, but, uh, there's also a whole host of other documents, applications, website forms that have been created and are ready to go. So as soon as these guidelines are adopted, um, I just need to do some testing on the application to make sure there's no bugs on it. And then we can take this program live. Uh, so if council has any questions on this program, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, Quentin. Councilmembers, we have any questions?
That should just comment.
Comment? Mr. Keg?
I just want to thank all the hard work and thank you for the finance committee for reviewing it and adding that 300 feet or, excuse me, what, how many feet was it? Uh, we were 300 feet.
Back to Walmart. It's standard feet.
Yeah, extended that out.
Walmart.
Cause there's a lot of businesses that did get impacted already from the I, or excuse me, the I, the Highway Three project that, um, can benefit from this or use it for a positive thing. Cause it's a, it's a trying time for a lot of these businesses.
It is.
Yeah, just in general, let alone when we're going through and then reconstruction of our main street like that. So this will be helpful for a lot of our businesses to hopefully keep them alive and keep them um, going to where we can see them in the future. So thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman McCoy?
I would like to also thank Mr. Gaddy for all the work he's done. I know you've had, probably had some people to help you. But, uh, I want to thank, uh, Tanya Douse for keeping you on there because you have done a wonderful job. I appreciate the fact that you came to our finance committee meeting. Um, it made it a lot easier, I think, for the whole committee, uh, you know, to be able to ask you questions right there. You were wonderful with the public that was here and worked with them. And you've shown again and again that you want to work with the public. Um, and, and I'll speak for the finance committee that they are in support of the CDBG, Main Street Construction Mitigation Small Business Grant Program Guidelines and urges, uh, passage of these guidelines um, at our meeting tonight. And thank you again, Mr. Gaddy, for all you've done.
Thank you. All right. Yes, thank you so much. I know that this is a couple. Businesses have reached out to me and I directed them your way. So hopefully they have contacted you and got, got going with some assistance. Um, so it's great to offer that help. So thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, great. Nope. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Directed towards that side.
I know. I don't see you because you're like so far away with it.
So, um, Mr. Gaddy, I'd also like to, once again, um, congratulate you on putting together, um, this much needed program for the city of Wairega. And I'm hoping that you can just, um, go through, um, your plans for outreach, um, to the businesses so that they're aware of this program.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. So once we had everything settled and I know I can open everything up without, without bugs, we're going to do a marketing blast. Um, we're going to do this through a few different avenues. Um, we will be putting together flyers with QR codes that will link back to our website and to our application. And we, we will be looking at doing mass distribution of these to a whole bunch of different site addresses along Main Street. We do have budget set aside for that. We will be doing social media blasts through the grapevine, through Siskiyou Economic Development Council's website, through the Small Business Development Center website. Um, and we've all a- already had a good bit of one-on-one. I've had probably, I'd say between 15 to 20 businesses reach out so far that I've spoken to personally. Um, and also it's just through boots in the ground. You know, I was just at Josefina Taqueria for dinner before council meeting. And again, my business card told him about the upcoming program, made sure that he'd reached out. So it's like really, you know, because it is a small community, it's taking every, every chance that you can get. And, and while I'm speaking on that, I should implore people because, you know, um, sometimes you can see the orange cones and you'll see, oh, I'll go there next time. Go there that time. If someone behind you in a car behind you has to wait five seconds for you to slow down and pull through some cones, it really makes a big difference for these, for these small businesses. You know, their sales really have been impacted. Um, but it's going to require, you know, a whole community to, to, to get this out. Uh, not everyone's on Facebook. Not everyone checks their mail. Not everyone's going to be aware. So this is where I ask you as council members and you as members of the public that if you know someone who could potentially benefit from this program, please send them our way. Let them know. Cause in this community, word of mouth has always been probably the biggest way that things get around. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Quentin. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Sorry. I have totally ignored you. All right. Hey, the recommend city council action is the motion.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment, do you have a public comment regarding the CBD, uh, CDBG, um, grant, um, that was just, uh, stated before you? Oh, yeah. Okay, the public comment. Okay. Sorry. Now move on to the recommended city council action, motion to approve city of Wairega CDBG Main Street Construction Mitigation Small Business Grant Program Guidelines. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to, as so approved.
I have a motion for Councilman Keg. Do I have a second?
Uh, Councilman McCoy, so moved.
I have a second, Councilman McCoy. And I will do roll call. Councilman Keg?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you guys so much. And to B, this is the review of the recommend municipal code one dash two four dash one seven oh. Addressing the council. Manner addressing council. Each person desiring to address the council shall step up to the microphone in front of the rail, state his name and address for the record, state the subject he wishes to discuss, state who he is representing, if he represents an organization or other persons. And unless further time is granted by a majority vote of the council, shall limit his remarks to five minutes. Uh, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked by a council member or a member of the city staff without permission of the presiding officer. So let better.
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairega City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager versus the city of Wairega. Just, uh, what you have just read here is the city municipal code. And so I'm going to kind of just go back through and read the rest of 1.24.170, which is addressing the council. And the reason that we're discussing this, this is because first and foremost, our city attorney has, uh, notified us that there's been a number of inappropriate actions taken by members of the public. The bid may be local or may not be local. Where we're calling or it's being referred to as Zoom bombing essentially. And so very hateful speech uh, is, is coming through multiple city council meetings. And I believe Mr. Jared made us aware earlier today that Calabasas was the latest and apparently it made national news. And so people are saying very, very hateful things. And so we're discussing tonight whether or not the city council for the city of Wairega would like to roll back the requirements of the Zoom meeting that technically are no longer required for public comment. But uh, the reason we're reading the municipal code is because technically we're, you know, we already have guidance on this item. And so inevitably we need direction this evening from you to go back and rework your intention on what you would like to see happen when it comes to not only that topic as far as Zoom meeting is concerned, but a couple of other items that are built into this municipal code. So I'm just going to go ahead and read 1.2.170. And then I'm going to talk about the four areas that we would like to have you discuss. And obviously, Mr. Jared will be here to weigh in to advise you legally on what, uh, your concerns may or may not be. So going back to 1.2.170, addressing the council. This is section A, which, uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe just read, but manner of addressing council. Each person desiring to address the council shall step up to the microphone in front of the rail. That is where I am. So our Muni code literally already states that you need to be in this building in order to make public comment. State his name and you will start to see that our Muni code has some issues when it comes to, um, the sex that we're discussing, right? And so everything is in the male perspective. So that is another thing we need to discuss. So state his name and address for the record, state the subject he wishes to discuss, state whom he is representing. If he represents an organization or other persons, and unless further time is granted by majority vote of the council, shall limit his remarks to five minutes. That's another item that we will discuss and I will go back over the four items we're discussing today. But since it's referenced in the Muni code that we already have a local law that you are required to allow five minutes for, uh, basically addressing you during public comment during a city council meeting. We've had interest in the past. I know that this item has come up multiple times with prior councils, but we currently have five minutes. Most every other agency in Siskiyou County, including the county, allows for three minutes. So that's an item that we would like direction this evening if possible, on whether or not you, the city council, would like to see a change. Uh, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilman or a member of the city staff without the permission of the presiding officer, which in this instance, my assumption would be the mayor's position. Uh, going on to B, spokesman for group of persons. And I had an inquiry earlier today on what does that mean? And I think that we will go to our city attorney to see what his impression is of this, but in order to expedite matters and to avoid, uh, repetitious presentations, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, it shall be proper for the presiding officer to request that a spokesman be chosen by the group to address the council and in case additional matters are to be presented by any other member of said group to limit the number of such persons addressing the council. And so here, it's a little bit blurry in my opinion that you need to really, it's unfair to say that all of a sudden I came to speak on something and you're grouping me in with other people that I don't necessarily identify with. And so I think that that is something that you guys might, might want to address here. Item C, after motion, after a motion has been made or a public hearing has been closed, no member of the public shall address the council from the audience on the matter under consideration without first securing permission to do so by a majority vote of the city council. And I don't think that we have any interest in making much changes, but ultimately you would be effectively changing this section of the ordinance or of the Muni code via ordinance. And so we're presenting it to you how it's currently written. So this evening, here are the topics for discussion, limiting remarks. Uh, do we want to move from a five minute to a three minute public comment time? So that means at the start of this meeting, we have public comment on consent and things not on the agenda. We would only allow three minutes for folks. And then ultimately for every item on the agenda, as people come up as they will after I'm done speaking and you guys have done, uh, done speaking as well. When public comment happens, we're tonight are offering five minutes because that is our standard within the Muni code. Excuse me. Two, method and manner of addressing the council prior to COVID, public comment was heard in person. Uh, each person desiring to address the council shall step up to the microphone in front of the rail. So we're just restating the Muni code here once again. So that's really our primary goal this evening is to discuss whether or not we want to remove the option to have public comment via Zoom and go back to the model that existed within this chambers prior to COVID. Item number three is an obvious one that needs to take place throughout the entire Muni code. And that's just the gentle, gender neutral language. So that'll get cleaned up. If there is a decision that is made this evening to make any changes and bring the ordinance forward, that's just the common thing that we're doing on all ordinances moving forward is fixing the gender neutral language. And then finally, discussion of AB 2449, remote participation. So this is taking things a step further and we're saying, do you want to literally roll back to pre-COVID times where you as city council members do not have the option to utilize Zoom? Uh, that way we would be transitioning hypothetically into completely live streaming Zoom. There would be no way to participate as a member of the public. You could watch the meeting. But we would be allowed, when our attorney might be in another location, he would be allowed to engage the meeting via Zoom. If we had a contractor that was in another location, we have hired NMR. Or we're in the process of hiring this company to work on the pool. So hypothetically, they're based out of Reading. So if for there were an instance where we needed them and they weren't able to physically be here for a snowstorm, they would be allowed to access the Zoom meeting and engage the meeting with you in that way. So that is the fourth option. Do you want to remove the ability of council members to basically have an incident that allows them to not physically be here, but still attend the meeting and vote? So I hope that that is somewhat clear. I am obviously here to answer any questions. And, uh, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Hey.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Keg.
Yes. Um, a couple of points there.
Okay.
Um, as Mr. Ledbetter mentioned, I, I do have an opinion about, um, 124170B, um, for general public comment requiring people to group together might be problematic, uh, under the law. Um, for hearing purposes, I've seen that done before, but I've never seen it, um, enforced for a general public comment scenario. Um, as far as the time, um, limits, yeah, your, your code is fairly rare in, um, in allowing a five minute period, uh, stipulating a five minute period. The typical statewide is by far a three minute period. Uh, it's very rare to have that, uh, enumerated in, in ordinance. It's most common to have that in rules of procedure. Um, and it's most common to also follow that up with, at the discretion of the chair, mayor. Um, and the reason for that is there are times where And the reason for that is there are times where the room is packed and it's overflowing. Uh, in, uh, in some instances, in many other cities that I've represented, literally a hundred people wanting to speak. Then having everyone five minutes and having that five hundred minute council meeting just on one item could be real problematic. And so it's understood that that is at the discretion of the chair for for meeting management purposes to reduce that. I have seen that as a standard operating procedure down to one minute. Um, the, uh, the metro transportation board in, in, in city of LA or county of LA, it's actually Southern California. Um, that is a very large board. They go out billions of dollars in transportation monies and they limit their public comment to one minute. Um, and I've had to present there and it became rather pointless to present. What you have to do then is put it in a letter and then you're basically allowed to introduce your letter. So one minute really does for general public comment or for a hearing item really does become problematic. But that truly are under a minute is problematic. One minute is probably the legal limit. But that's not what we're talking about here. It's really talking about going from five minutes to three minutes, which is the standard. The issue relating to gender neutral, that goes without saying, um, that the trend is to, um, to go to a gender neutral format. The issue between remote participation and Zoom is really intertwined here. And, um, as Mr. Leder mentioned about remote participation by council members. That was of course during the COVID time period, when all of our meetings were all remote or many were all remote, uh, both by, uh, the public and by members of councils and boards. That has been, um, overturned as of last March. And as of last, uh, January, that's when, uh, AB twenty-four, forty-nine came into, into play. And then SB three sixty-one, I believe it was, was then revoked. And, um, the, the governor's, uh, order, um, executive order lapsed at the time of pulling, um, the statewide COVID emergency. But AB twenty-four, forty-nine did allow for a narrow exemption or participation by council members under two scenarios. One is called just cause and the other is emergency circumstances. Both of those are of a personal nature that a council member would have. And it does not allow, um, for all council members to participate remotely at any one time. Um, what it does allow for is a majority to be here and, um, the remainder to, um, let the, the council know on very short notice in most, in some circumstances that they have a personal emergency, um, and those are defined in the statute or that they have a reason, the just cause that would cause them to not be able to be there. There are, uh, requirements for utilizing either of those uh, as to how you get to use them. But there are limitations on the number of times that you could use them. And it does not require that a city allow this to happen. It says a city may do this. And the, I guess the, the biggest way that a city, um, facilitates this is through the participation by the public in a similar way. Under the Brown Act, you're able to participate away from, um, council chambers. Um, and you always have been able to, uh, participate away from council chambers. But in doing so, you would have to, it would have to be posted on the agenda where you would be participating from. You would then at that location need to post, um, an agenda, just like we post the agenda here. And you would have to allow public participation at that location. I've seen this used often when people, historically, when people, when council members go to a conference. And I had to cancel the council member one time about, um, she was attending a conference at the Awanning Hotel in Yosemite. And we needed to make arrangements and this was a conference that she was at. They needed to make arrangements for there to be a conference room. And we needed to put the conference room location on our agenda. It needed to be posted at the Awanning Hotel and it was all very, it was all done above board. And, and so that still is allowed. If for instance, you, um, I've seen this done where a council member has an illness and needs to be at their home recuperating. So that is still available to participate in that way. When you do that, it doesn't require that you use Zoom. It requires that there be a conference call line and that part of it, um, remains unchanged. What has changed with, um, AB twenty-four, uh, forty-nine is if you're going to use the just cause or emergency circumstances, you also need to have an electronic format for the public to participate with. And that can get quite complex. And so that's one consideration. The larger consideration that's happening, um, over the last month and a half, two months now is an increase in Zoom bombing, it's called. And this is where a, a member of the public, um, comes on via Zoom and, um, starts to say things that are quite, um, offensive, but borderline, um, not able to, um, to, um, you know, stop their participation and then continues on. And before you know it, there's hate speech happening and very offensive things being stated. Seeing as there's no requirement to allow Zoom participation, many cities are choosing to no longer offer the Zoom option and are simply going back to pre-COVID, um, technology of not using the Zoom feature. And, um, allowing of remote participation by the public only when, and there's a way to do this, but allow it only when a just cause situation, um, in emergency circumstances situation, uh, under, uh, twenty-four, forty-nine's rules would arise. And so it really is balancing these two things of how your participation on those off chances you might need to, um, would, would be allowed. But then also balancing that with protecting the, um, the free speech rights of everyone and the rights of everyone to feel safe in, um, what is being stated. I think that covers all of the points that we had to make on this. The only other thing I would add is, um, that the code that you is under consideration. If you note in that part where it says open parentheses, um, ORD four, four, two, section two, part nineteen seventy. Um, I believe that means the code was adopted in nineteen seventy. So it's been a while.
Um, that's why it says hey.
Yeah, been a little while. There is a provision here that is, um, where is the? There, there is a section or two in this, uh, in one twenty, uh, one point two, four. Um, that is actually unenforceable because the law has changed since nineteen seventy. So we should probably revisit those too, if we're opening it up to a larger, um, discussion on these things. And of course, this section deals in many respects with the, the issues that were, you tasked me to look at with code of conduct, code of ethics, those types of things. It's all blended in here and comes in through here and Robert's rules and the code of conduct. And so it's all very intertwined. But before we tonight is a discussion on these issues as Leder pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. Okay. Well, there's a lot before us here to discuss on. Who wants to go first? I know people are, or my council members are chomping at the bit here, I would think. Everybody looks, seems kind of relaxed right now.
There's a lot of questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify for this gentleman that my understanding is, is that there will be a discussion here by the city council. That way, when we do go to public comment, um, they won't come back and discuss new items. And so ultimately at this moment, they'll do their discussion and then the mayor will open it up for you to come participate.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leder. Okay. So, um, who would like to go first? Okay. Since I dissed you last time, I am Councilman Baker.
Thank you. Um, so this is just a discussion. Um, and question and answer period, correct? So, um, Mr. Jared, you mentioned that having a specific public comment time period is not common in ordinances? Is that, is that true? And that it is defined in that council's code of conduct? So I just want to go on record, um, saying that, um, I believe that we are conducting, the citizens of Waireka were conducting their business. And I really like public participation. And I enjoy hearing public comments. Um, and sometimes it takes, believe it or not, sometimes it takes even me to a minute or two to get rolling with what I want to say. I'm feeling like I'm doing that right now. So, um, I would not be in favor of reducing the time for public comment. But I would like to also afford the presiding officer, AKA the mayor, based on, um, the number of people attending the meeting, um, the opportunity to, um, ask us and, and have the council as a whole make a decision if there is going to be, um, um, a reduction in time based on what the, um, the topic is. Okay. So, um, I would like to see that moved totally to the code of conduct, but I would like to see that enforceable as well. So it's not something that can be, you know, just willy nilly changed, um, meeting to meeting. And I'm not saying that it would be, but I just want to make sure if we move it to just the code of conduct that it is something that we as a council as a whole have an opportunity to provide input into, um, at say, large public hearings. Um, so, um, I would appreciate that. And excuse my ignorance, but what is, what is the difference between live streaming versus Zoom?
That we would actually be casting, I believe, and Reddick can step in here because we did have Dave from Siskiyou Media Council come and work with, um, Reddick on the finance team on this item. But by understanding is that essentially you would go to a channel and like you would be able to go do a YouTube channel essentially, and you would see like television, the meeting would be happening live. And so you would just be watching it and you would not be chiming in with raising your hand or any of the functions of Zoom. It would be like you were watching live television.
Thank you. And we have the opportunity to provide the meetings in that platform versus Zoom?
No, I'm sorry. We're currently trying to do both, which is why the TVs aren't working this evening. Is that we're in the process of literally being able to do both. And so we could maintain doing both or we could maintain doing the Zoom function and casting to basically a channel as though, so you would have multiple options. If you remained and you felt that you wanted to continue to have the Zoom option, we still plan on having kind of a television option, if you will, that you would not have to sign into Zoom. You would not need Zoom. You would not, uh, need to go there at all. You could go to the YouTube channel and literally watch live the video and, and you're not engaging Zoom whatsoever. That's a new thing that we're attempting, uh, to do for the city of Waireka.
Thank you, Jason. Um, so council member, um, from the ad hoc communications, um, committee, um, Dave was Siskiyou Media Council. So Waireka Channel Four, if you're on Northland Cable, you would be able to see, you know, the council meetings on Northland Cable. But as you know, when you watch TV, you aren't, well, some people may talk to their TV, but, um, it's, it's a one-way sort of, um, streaming kind of communication. So that's the live stream, um, function on it as well as it would be, um, live streamed on YouTube. Um, we're still running the Zoom. I think, um, this was our beta night. It didn't go as planned, but, um, we'll get the bugs worked out on that. So, yeah.
Thank you. And one of the questions that is being asked of us to discuss tonight is whether we want to continue, we want to consider to continue to allow people to provide public comment via Zoom. Is that correct? Okay. With the understanding that, um, people are not playing nicely. I remember, uh, when my grandsons, uh, first started attending school um, via Zoom in 2020, and there were some interesting things that were, um, happening. Um, and so based on that and based on the fact that the public has the opportunity to present their comments and writing, um, via or via email, correct? Um, I would be in favor of discontinuing, um, the Zoom public comments. And I can't believe, how can I just displace all of my paperwork so soon? Was there anything else you wanted us to weigh in on? I know there were four things. I, I seem to have misplaced my paper that has.
Well, Ms., Ms. Baker, I just wanted to, to chime in that ultimately, um, yeah, I could reread the three and four, but it, it's not limited to that. If you have any other concerns that you do want to bring up or talk about ultimately that are really along this topic, you're wel, you're welcome to do that. But let me pull up, uh, I believe was, let me just pull up three and four. So three is, um, something you don't need to worry too much about. That's naturally going to happen with the gender neutral language. Basically every time we have, uh, Mr. Jared do an ordinance update, that's just kind of standard as he's going to work on that for us. Um, the next one, I think I'll let Mr. Jared chime in, but essentially what we're asking you beyond just the public comment on Zoom, do you want to roll back things to the point where council members do not have the option to participate in a meeting if they're not physically here? But I think Mr. Jared has more technical expertise on that than I do.
Right. And that doesn't require a code amendment.
That's just a general discussion.
Yeah, that's a, um, more of a policy, uh, practice on your part as to how you're going to make available the, the two-way remote participation. Because if you're going to, um, allow remote participation by council members under, uh, the just cause emergency circumstance, you also need to allow remote participation by the public. And as, um, was stated, the, the YouTube channel, the, um, the, the television viewing component, even though it's now largely going to be online. Um, those are one-way communication streams. You would then also have, if you're going to allow for remote participation for just cause emergency circumstances by council members, you, what the code requires is you allow remote participation, um, by the public. And so that's where it And so that's where it gets um, a little technically tricky. Um, and and if that's what the code will, will require you to do. And so your direction would effectively be, um, no, don't, um, take on those hurdles. If someone wants to come and speak, they speak here and council members therefore wouldn't be allowed to avail themselves of the emergency circumstance just cause, um, uh, state code.
And so I am assuming that we would go back to the fancy, we used to call it the Star Trek phone years ago. And I, I seem to remember, um, last fall, there was a meeting where Mr. Cake was, um, participating via the conference call, the, the phone. And I was, uh, a member of the public at that time and it was extremely distracting and frustrating, um, to me. Um, and so I I personally would kind of like to have us all here participating. I'm, I'm not too crazy about continuing to allow, um, the remote participation. And having said all of that, it, it, it's kind of hard for me to, um, I, I just don't know if I should live, I just, I think what I want to do is talk with you tomorrow, Mr. Jared. We have a meeting set up regarding the code of conduct because I'm having kind of a hard time, um, trying to just make sense of what should be in an ordinance versus what is really the code of conduct. Um, so I think I will end my comments with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, um, Baker. Okay. And I do have a request for, um, a break at eight thirty. If we could just take maybe like a seven-minute break. Um, that's going to be okay with the council. It's okay? Okay. So seven minutes. That's great. You're up. Okay.
It's cut and dry for me. When we, when this discussion came up last time, as far as three to five minutes, um, I was one of the ones voicing my opinion very highly on keeping it five minutes. Cause I feel that the, the citizens have the right to voice their opinion and five minutes, sometimes like, like, um, Councilman Baker stated that sometimes we have a hard time spitting it all out in three minutes. So me included. And so I, I agree with, with Councilman Baker that we, we need to keep that five minutes with the discretion of the mayor, um, running the meetings. And if we have a packed house, that I totally agree with her, that, that that comes down to the council directs the mayor to use his discretion or her discretion, whoever the mayor is at the time, on how to run that meeting, whether they want to reduce it to three minutes at that point in time. I totally agree with that, um, because if we get a packed house, there's been a few packed houses and there's been one, there's been a couple that, that, uh, some of the councilmen haven't been able to attend on these that we were like packed out the, down the road and everything else. When we're talking about the, uh, police station and the, the future of the police, that was a big one. Um, so those, those type of, uh, meetings, you got to reduce this, the public comment at that point in time. I agree. But I still think that we should have the five minutes as a standard. Um, getting to, let's see, um, comments going or what's the method as far as remote versus like Zoom and stuff like that? I still, ever since that's for me, the Zoom, when, uh, when we went, that's the only good thing I could say about the whole pandemic was that actually gave the citizens an opportunity to speak their mind on city council meetings. Um, it was kind of a different thing to have to go through that, especially me being the mayor at the time. It was really difficult doing, the, going through that period, but I think it, uh, definitely gave the public the more of a, a bigger opportunity to weigh in on the sub, on the subjects and gives them, um, that, that opportunity. And I think that's, I think that's crucial this day and age. Cause I, I'm all for letting the public, um, getting their comments in. And because that we are here as elected officials, as councilmen by the public. And we need to listen to the public. And if we're reducing their time and not giving them the chance to speak, then we're not doing our job, I feel. That's my, that's my opinion. But that's why I feel like I've been elected is to listen and to voice their opinion, voice their, make their voice heard. And if they're not getting heard, then we're not doing our job. So as far as that goes, yeah, I think we still should have some type of Zoom participation. And as far as participation for councilmen, um, remote, some type of remote. I'm definitely think we should be able to have that opportunity somehow, some way. I, right now I participate in a couple of different meetings with homelessness that I have to state, just like what you, um, our attorney stated, that we have to state where we're at. We have to post the agenda at our location. So whatever that may be, that's fine. Um, I don't, I'm not too picky on that part of it. Because I have to do that anyways, on a lot of my meetings with the homelessness anyway. So I have to post it. I have to say who I am. I have to open it up to the public. Doesn't bother me whatsoever. Yeah, I have no problem with that. We're here as in the public's eye anyways. Um, might be a little tricky if you're on vacation to be able to do something like that, but you know, there it again, you can, there might be some opt-outs that we need to discuss. And some of the opt-outs would be like I said, if you're sick or if you're on vacation in some other area that you can't get out, then so be it. That's, you know, me up in the mountains, going hunting and fishing. I'm not going to try to get a computer use up there. So ain't going to happen. So I think we're on the right track on a lot of different things. Um, obviously we need to clean up the language, obviously, because from nineteen seventy, I think a few things have changed since then. But, um, I guess that pretty much covers. I think you kind of got what my feeling is. I think the council understands. Like I said, the main thing is for me is the three to five minutes, keeping it at five, because I really feel that the public needs to have their chance to voice their opinion. And then it comes down to the mayor making that deci- that decision with the council's advice on limiting if we have a packed house. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cake. I'll go ahead and break now before somebody else starts. So we will break at eight twenty-eight and, um, come back at, come back at eight thirty.
Bye Judge.
See ya. Thank you.
All right. Well, we're back in session here at eight or eight forty. Yes. All right. Um, so I guess this is my turn, right?
Yeah.
Did you go, Paul?
No, I didn't.
No, you go ahead. No, good. I'm sorry.
A lot's been said and a lot of it.
A lot of it I'm going to probably agree with, some of it I won't, but, um, I'm glad we're cleaning up the gender legislation. I can remember taking a job in, in nineteen eighty-eight at, uh, Waireka Union School District as the, um, as a district librarian. And as we went through and looked at books that needed to go, the first one that we thought, what we thought needed to go was the one that said, uh, women, uh, men become doctors, women become nurses. Men build houses, women clean houses. And I went, okay, that one's going out. That was in nineteen eighty-eight. So, uh, um, thank you, uh, everybody and Andrew for cleaning that up. Um, I would sup- I'm going to make it quick. I would roll, I would support rolling back, uh, pre-COVID to no Zoom. I, um, uh, not, um, for no other reason than we were doing fine prior to Zoom. I will tell you Zoom has done more, as an educator, Zoom has done more to put education online and on the map than any uh, initiative that any state or federal could do. Uh, when I got my credential in nineteen eighty-one, they, we had to read a book called Schools of the Future and they said, schools of the future, all your classes will be, they didn't say online, because we didn't have on, online in nineteen eighty-one. All the, you know, you'll watch them on TV and blah, 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 blah. Well, you know what? I went through, I, I, I got my masters and I, I, I worked in Southern California and I, I've worked up here. And I never saw the level of technology that we have. So is Zoom good? Yeah. But I just, sometimes it's, it Zoom scares me just like Facebook does, because people say things that are, are either nasty, unfounded or whatever. And the saddest thing that I think I ever read about Zoom was during COVID, when two different students that were in, I want to say sixth grade and probably eighth grade, um, in two different schools, two different states. But they got their classes on, you know, they had their little class and they have all the different pictures up there and then they, they both, uh, committed suicide in front of their students. And so it's sometimes you, there, there are unintended consequences. So that's, so, um, I, uh, I think that, uh, our, our, um, planning commission already uses three minutes. Is that correct for their, um? Yeah. Thank you for their public comment. And so I've asked, I have been asking since I've been on council to go to three minutes. We can always, I mean, if we can vote to let them have longer than, than I, I support that. I will tell you, having been in private sector a lot, the one thing that I heard over and over and over again, when I was talking to people about my business was, I don't want to hear a lot. I want you to give me the ninety second. If you can't tell me in ninety seconds, um, no disrespect, but they said, if you can't tell me in ninety seconds, they called it an elevator pitch, um, then you don't know your business real well. And I went, ooh. So, um, and it was same thing and when we were in high school, National Forensic League and, and which is a speaking, the, I was in the NFL, believe it or not. Um, um, you know, we, we tried to, they tried, the judges told us, you need to make it quick, to the point and, 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 uh, make sure that people understand what you're doing. So that's why I say that. And finally, um, I am so happy that, uh, the office is, is going to do a remodel of this whole area. And I hope during that remodel, because I've been probably the one that complains the loudest. Oh, go figure. Uh, no, I, I really, I've been the one that's complaining the loudest about the poor sound. And, um, so I, I really think remove, um, I have not had great luck when I, and I've called into council meetings, sometimes by vacation, sometimes with COVID. Uh, but I would say that, um, we don't have a great sound system and I would just assume that if, um, you know, people are gonna, if people are going to speak, that they would be here. I, I also like to see their passion and I like to, I'm, excuse me, not people, council members. So, um, I don't think I would ever zoom in again or would go on a Polycom, uh, Star Trek phone. Uh, so I, I would, I would personally like to see that, um, you know, if you're gone, you're gone. Enjoy, if you have a, a wedding or vacation or a funeral or whatever, you need to focus on that. Uh, there's still four people here. If I'm gone, four of the four council members that are here, they, they have this under control. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. My turn, yes. Um, I would be for going to three minutes. Um, I've been explained for many reasons, um, why from other reasonings behind a three-minute rule for speaking like Mr. McCoy said, um, so I'd go for the three minutes to roll that back. Um, pre-Zoom. Um, I think it's fizzled. Uh, it was a lot when it was required, but people couldn't come into our chambers. Um, hopefully we don't have to get back there again where we, you know, had to lock everybody out of here and, um, but we don't see many people on anymore. So I think it's fizzled. Um, I'd like to see it totally go away. We're a small enough town. I'm not saying that's a use of, you know, whatever, but I would like to see more participation here in the audience. And so, um, and for council members, I think if you're gone, enjoy yourself, whatever it is, even if you're not, if you're sick, you're not going to enjoy yourself, but you don't need to be on coughing at us and you know, I don't want to see in your pajamas. You don't want to see me in my pajamas and, um, you know, just stay away and, um, come here. And like I said, it only takes three. Like if I'm going to be gone, we have a minute. That's why we have Mayor Pro Tem. We have capable council here to run the meetings. Um, cleaning up the gender and all aspects of every, the references here from just his, from everything in our, our, um, codes needs to be addressed. Yeah. Cause some of it nineteen seventy and some of our older business codes of nineteen, nineteen and twenty, um, everything needs an update. So, um, you know, yes, technology, everybody's saying that's the way of the future, but then it's, you get both sides. People say we're losing the human connect to being around each other and people are being socially awkward. You know, they don't, you know, now I think they're finally starting to come around. You see people gathering and kind of meeting now at a coffee shop before, but it was like weird and nobody wanted to get out of the house because you're used to being told you can't go anywhere. And so I think we need to get away from that and being back to, you know, socialization. So I'd just like to see everything roll back prior to COVID, no Zoom. Um, and you know, I hear what everybody's saying about the public needs to be heard, but there's several ways that we can be heard from the public. They can call us, they can text us, they can email us. They request a meeting with us, you know, outside. Um, you know, if it's not appropriate. And they do stop us and complain and give us congrats. So, you know, there is ways for the public to reach out to us besides stepping up to the podium. And I think that's it, right? Is that all we're really asking for? What's that? Oh, I think that's it. Okay. So now with that, I will go to public comment and invite people down for a vote comment.
Good, good evening, Councilman, uh, Daniel Simon, the Third Street Waireka. And I guess we're having a speech about speech. And, uh, appreciate ideas. I had something prepared that kind of changed my tune. Um, and, um, so obviously there's a balance between order and getting things done, because if you let speak, people speak all night, government can't get anything done. On the other hand, you know, people want to be heard and obviously you're all sensitive to that. That's appreciated. Um, so where is the balance? I got some solutions that I penciled out. Um, there, there are some things that could, um, and, and I appreciate several of you, I know you personally. And I really appreciate what you've been doing. Um, to the public, some of this, um, it's not going to look, it's not going to make you guys look good. Okay? But I understand the need for order. Um, some might consider this idea as a, um, shut up the peasants proposal. Um, so it's a real sensitive thing and, um, it also might make the council members look like they want to go home early from the meetings. But I want you guys to be looking good, of course. And so, you know, there's some things of the First Amendment of US Constitution. I'm sure you read it. Um, California Constitution, every person may freely speak, write and publish his or her own sentiments on all subjects. A law may not restrain or abridge liberty of speech or press. And I'm sure the courts have figured out, uh, how much time a person would get. So I wanted to, uh, throw out a couple of solutions that might help or at least in consideration, because I guess this is just the opening first discussion of this. And so we have time to modify this. You know, this is a small town versus some, I would not want to be in some of the big city council meetings, but, um, so the county has this, uh, three-minute limit, but you can ask the chair for five minutes. Now that's kind of unique and I've done that before and it's helpful, uh, especially with complicated things. So, um, perhaps the mayor could extend the time to five minutes, or maybe the person is doing well and another three minutes. Um, here's another one is, um, one person could speak and another person could continue the script. I've done that before because I had a complicated message. I just hand a script to the next person who gets their three minutes in front of the supervisors. Um, another possibility is deferring time, but, uh, sign up to do so. Okay. Deferring time, kind of like Congress. You know, I defer my time to the gentleman from Louisiana. All right. So there's some, some possible solutions to consider. Um, let's see, I know there is a way for people to appear for longer periods of time and do a presentation. We saw people doing that here today. The public may not know of that method very well. And doing presentation, we saw people doing that here today. The public may not know of that method very well. That would help on the website. If you would like to give a presentation, how do the, how does the public get, say, fifteen minutes? To where they could actually represent a whole group of people? So that is a method for, say, a spokesman type person. Um. So what I'd like to do is I want to get some ideas over to Dwayne with some solutions. All right, and then he can get it to county, to the council for the city. And then perhaps um. There would be a balance so that would uh preserve you guys' reputation. So I just uh, I guess I would propose that, you know, I could other council members who are more uh who are available, but. I'm just picking on Dwayne tonight. So I I guess that's what I have to say. Is because I want to provide us, I'm an engineer, we come up with solutions all the time, but um. I I just a balance so that the people, you know, can have their say, but there's still order. And 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 timeliness. So I guess with that, I yield.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Lorenzo Love, Waireka, uh I'm not giving my street address. If you want. Speaker's street addresses, every one of you should read your address into the record too. Um it's three minute limit. You tried to do this before. It didn't go over well. It made you look petty. If you don't have the patience to sit here and listen to each citizen for a whole five minutes. You need to find a different job. Now, the general practice I've seen in the fifteen years I've been coming here is on the rare occasion where there is a packed house. The mayor will limit it to three minutes. I've seen that maybe less than half a dozen times. I think there was one case where where it was limited to two minutes. But that's, that's the rarity. As a general. Course of events, there's not enough people here that you can't listen to everyone for five minutes. At the spokesman deal, I have never seen that fifteen years, never seen a spokesman pointed. And no spokesman's gonna speak for me. I'm gonna speak for myself. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Don Marriatri. I have a problem with by uh limiting it to three minutes because there are times when I can't even speak. I have to use my computer. And to speak for me. So that's gonna take five minutes. And there are disabled people like Bethany who definitely need five minutes. You know, my comment matters greatly. Because I voted you into this seat that you sit in. And I'm related to half the people in Waireka and I know the other half. And all of them, I have baked to vote you all into these seats. I was here before you. And I'll be here after you. And my comment matters. And five minutes is not that long. Now, I understand that we've had five times that we've had to. Limit the comments because we have had a packed house. I get that. Three minutes, that makes sense, or even two minutes, that makes sense. But to not listen to us at all and pack us into a group like this is stating. That needs to be removed, that that you have on that agenda. That's that language needs to be taken out completely. Because that right there sets it in stone. And from then on, when we have a packed house, you're gonna make. One spokesperson speak for all three of three minutes for everyone. That does not work for me at all. And as I said. I am disabled and there are people disabled. Not everyone can come up to that podium. That that language needs to be changed too. Because then it makes everybody go, well, why does she so special if she gets a microphone? I take a risk walking over. So you might want to consider that. Why not? But thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, I will close public comment. So come back. So we just give uh. This discussion for a direction.
If you don't mind, I'll just kind of summarize what we have.
Yes.
So.
That sounds good.
Currently, I would say that we have, let's keep it at five minutes. Uh we also have, uh let's discontinue Zoom public comment. And let's also uh discontinue council participation. We have a. Currently, direction from three of you in agreement on those items.
And as far as the language goes, you're you're gonna be taking care of that um. Correct, Mr. Jared or whoever staff.
Yeah, and every ordinance that gets, I mean, the entire Muni code needs to be updated and uh as Mr. Jared and. CHW work through the ordinances that come to you, that language gets cleaned up.
Okay. So do you need to um? The motion direction or just to give you direction to bring back the changes for future?
No, we don't need really anything. And I I I advocate, but I really lean on Mr. Jared here is that. You have given direction to talk about the code of conduct and I think Mr. Jared hit it right on the head. There's really. A confluence of different documents that are telling us different things and they all kind of come together and ultimately. The Muni code literally in the agenda, that is the Muni code from nineteen seventy. So that's what we're attempting to clean up. And there may be an instance where you advocate and I advocate you have a meeting with Mr. Jared tomorrow. But hey, maybe this isn't a Muni code item and we're removing it completely and it's going into a different document that we still need to get rectified. And I really recommend. Based off of the mayor's direction and your engagement with uh Mr. Jared, that you voice that. Then I think we build something from the notes today and your one-on-one conversations.
Okay, great. Yes, okay, yep.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy has a question. Mr. Paul McCoy, um the question is directed either at uh city manager or the city attorney. Uh in this, it's, I know this is fifty years old, so I mean, it should have been cleaned up twenty years ago. I realize that and we're all sitting here taking care of it.
It's older than fifty, yeah.
But um when it says, it doesn't matter with five minutes, three minutes, seven minutes, ten minutes. It says time is granted and unless further time is granted by ma- ma- majority vote of the council. Council shall limit his remarks to X number of minutes. Are we in the past on those when somebody comes up and they've spoken five for five minutes and sometimes people do go over? And we have allowed them to go over. We have not voted. We have done by consensus. To me, a vote is. A formal, something that can be recognized in the record, but I may be incorrect there. So I'm asking you to. How how does this interpret if we looked, you know?
I yield to the city attorney, Mr. Jerry.
Yeah, it's just, it's not a gotcha. It's just a, you know.
Well, my thank you. No problem at all. I I think the language you're referring to is in uh one twenty-four, one seventy, the third line down.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh unless further time is granted by majority vote of the the council.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you. The way that's stated, that would mean a, well, I moved to gift person. Right? Um it could go either way, but majority vote would mean a a true affirmative vote.
Yeah.
Um I would interpret that to me, but this is your code and this is your opportunity for further clarifying that.
Well, all I'm asking and I'll and I will be quiet, that we cleaned it up, that part too. So we clean it, however we clean it up, let's clean it up. To the satisfaction of the council and the attorney and the city manager and assistant city manager.
But this kind of is one of the arguments for why, I mean, your city codes really should be brief and concise. Otherwise, they it gets too too unwieldy, codified there. But that type of discussion could be something that's in a policy where the. The larger framework is in the city code, the details of it are by an adopted, a policy adopted by resolution.
Rather than codified.
Right. And that way, it it's much easier for you also to um tweak it. If something isn't working. You can do it um just on one reading and it gets taken, you know, effective very quickly.
Thank you. Okay. I think we got that all clear. So great. Thank you, everybody. That was some. Great. Um. I don't know. What are we looking to bring this back for, Sir Ledbetter?
Well, yeah, I think it has to do with kind of it's it's the confluence or the nexus with the code of conduct discussions that are happening one-on-one. There's an overlap here and so I would anticipate that this could come back at any point in the next, I don't know, eight to twelve weeks. Is that accurate or do you think it's shorter?
Yeah, I was thinking of of sometime sooner than that, but it it all depends on on how the um. The discussions go, um what kind of input I get and then me being able to formulate that. And then bring it back to you all of saying this is, these are the pieces that I'm understanding how um things. Could fit together and then we discuss it. So I was thinking um something on this could be as soon as December. But the the code of conduct as a whole probably is looking like um eight weeks because of the holiday. Situation and so forth, so. It's right after the first of the year.
Okay, probably after the first year. We can guess. All right. Right. So number, item number eight, the city manager and staff report. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Waireka City Council. This is uh Jason Ledbetter, City Manager, City Waireka. This is gonna be very brief. First of all, there was a three week break here in between meetings, so I just took advantage of that three weeks. I took a week's vacation, went down to Southern California with the family. Uh two items here that we would like to get clarification on or just make you aware of. Is that we do have a couple of you participating in the Cal, I believe Cal League of Cities onboarding for new city council members, but we have another option. Uh that's way more local in this chamber. Uh our ins- insurance consortium SCORE is going to be whole. Holding some city council member training for any interested council members to all of the cities that they represent. And so we should have a decent number of attendees here from other cities. And so I just want you guys to be aware, or if you can. Advise me, uh right now, they are saying that this is going to happen on one of these four dates in December. The sixth, eighth, fourteenth or eighteenth, and I will make you aware of this. And they've just sent an arbitrary email out to everybody involved saying, hey, what date works? And so. They're gonna have a lot of different people coming back to them with a different date. So if you can tell me the date that works for you, but it's not guaranteed that that works. But if there is consensus, I can advocate for that. But just be aware, more information to come to you. This is very convenient because it's going to be in our chambers and it's just added um. An added interest that at a SCORE meeting, every member of staff was advocating that. The Cal League of Cities was filling up so quickly that we were looking for another training opportunity. Uh we also will be bringing to you in December, next year's city council um calendar. So what dates we're gonna hold city council meetings and that's always the first and third Tuesday of each month, but in some instances. One of those will land on a holiday or very close to a holiday. And so. I am advocating for you, if you'd like to give me some direction tonight or at the next meeting. Uh because it looks fishy to the public when we cancel a meeting very uh close to that said date. So we're advocating that we cancel the one-two-twenty-four meeting. Because there is a holiday the day before on a Monday, but the bigger issue is that there are a number of holidays within that. Week-long period that make it very difficult for us to actually bring an agenda of any value whatsoever to you. So if we don't cancel this meeting. It's gonna be a very light, light agenda. And so we're advocating that. If we do cancel this meeting, we'd like that knowledge as soon as possible so we can cancel it and not have somebody questioning why we're canceling a meeting. You know, as we approach it and get closer. And then finally, the last item I would like to discuss is I did attend the COC meeting. Uh last week and prior to that meeting, I did get some feedback from the public work staff as well as. Obviously, our police chief, Mr. Gilman back there uh about the last cleanup that transpired on uh Campus Drive. For the encampment. And so I think we're reaching a point where. I kind of the analogy of maybe uh doing some spring cleaning on some level where. People have been living on at this site, I think in some instances possibly for five years is what I've heard, but definitely for more than twenty-four months. I'm very. Well aware of that. And so we've done multiple cleanups. Through that time period when I started, I think we had Ben Miller in here giving you the latest update on one of the last cleanups. But he had done when I was started here about twenty-two, twenty-three months ago. And so we continue to do these cleanups, but ultimately what's happening is that we're at the point where we really need people to exit the space. To allow us to get heavy equipment in there to do a major, major cleanup. And then the people would obviously. You know, be allowed back into that location, but it would give us an opportunity to not have to be picking things up by hand, but ultimately using. Uh heavy equipment to do a major cleanup. So this idea was floated to um our partners on this. You know, on this issue, which is the county of Siskiyou. And ultimately, I advocated that to our uh. District supervisor here in District Four, I believe. And it's just disheartening to know that the response from the powers that be, not our district supervisor, certainly not. The behavioral health team or the people that we work with through the COC, but they unfortunately responded with um the building of a fence. On a property adjacent to Campus Drive that we were advocating, we moved people over to for a few days to allow us to do a cleanup. We're still investigating, cleaning up the site and more than likely, we're looking at doing something in the spring because right now. With the rains that have come down, it's just really too complicated to bring heavy equipment up there. But this will coincide with the shelter opening. Hopefully, we see some reduced volume at that location with the shelter opening. And then we will develop a strategy working with the folks that are. On that site so that uh they have a location to go to. We have a fresh cleanup and people are allowed to get back onto that site. Because ultimately, we don't want some disorganization where then people are kind of floating back out into different parts of the city. Uh we want to make this as smooth as possible. So thank you.
Um, yeah, uh Mr. Ledbetter, do you want us to, I give you direction on the um date for January second? Calendar for the meeting?
Yeah, if that's okay. If you feel that you can do that right now, it would be very helpful.
I'm looking, you said go to, did you say two meetings in December of twenty twenty-four?
No, I'm saying that at some point, we will come to you in December with the calendar for the year of twenty twenty-four, but right now. We don't have that yet and uh we would just like to start the discussion about the January second, twenty twenty-four. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, because because you're saying there's so, there's a few holidays in between those dates and stopping.
Yeah, you know, there's a holiday on the Monday before, but that's not the primary issue. It's that there's two holidays of the prior week. And so setting up the agendas is a lot more complicated than this uh. Yeah.
I'm for counseling or counseling the meeting for the second, but what are the wishes of the council? Direction?
I'm in agreement. Let's cancel.
Okay, you have direction and we're in agreement to go ahead and counsel that meeting for January second, twenty twenty. Yeah, it's twenty-four already. Oh, jeez, crazy. All right.
Day before my anniversary, so.
Oh, there you go.
So it gets me off the hook.
All right. Chief Gilman.
Uh, just a quick update. I was asked a while back about our new electronic system that we have, the servers. They did get installed on Thursday. We went live and we've had no issues. Everything is running smooth. We are rebuilding our database and the federal laws and the state laws that have changed the reporting. Are gonna make stats a little skewed for a while, so I will work with everyone as I come up here and present stats, because numbers might be different now, because the state reports different. It's it's nationwide. It's not just Way Rika, but but the system is running fine. We've had no issues, no major problems. We haven't had to call any tech support back in or anything. So just wanted to let you know, it's been less than a week, but it's running good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I will go to um. Council members for anything they'd like to talk about. Um, I'll actually, I guess I have to read that. Conference of media report verbal if any, in accordance to A B one, two, three, four, Councilmember Shell, make a brief report and file a written report. On any meeting, event, conference attended in city expense. Members of councilmen make brief announcements, reports, or requests staff to report to council on any matters of a subsequent meeting. Councilman Baker.
Um, thank you very much. It's been an exciting, busy time for me. And I just want to say that, first of all, I really appreciate the accuracy of the clock. On the wall, because I'm like going, why am I so tired? Well, it's because it's really ten fourteen. I um, I really, I have been busy. On October twenty-fourth, I attended the C two C meeting. That Call Your Interpretive Information Center, um, Council, um, I'm sorry, J P A. Uh, we met in Mount Shasta, and I will pass these around. Um, these are updated brochures. Um, with information about all of the uh, services um, that people can find at Call Your Rest Area. Beautiful new brochure, so I will pass those around. And I also attended um, the Finance Committee meeting on November first, November first. Um, in addition, um, I went to the Way Rika High School Homecoming Football Games. Go Miners. At least the game that I watched was a little dismal, but that's okay. They're a new team. Those, those uh. Freshmen played their hearts out. Um, let me see, um. Uh, Mr. Ledbetter. I, we had had some ongoing discussions over this um, in the last few months, but. I just think that it's so important that. Uh, we be connected to the state of California and things that are happening in the state of California. And so often I feel like. Uh, being up in Northern California, being a rural area, we're kind of the the last to hear really what's going on and issues that could affect us. And ways that we could be more proactive. And so I'm hoping that you would consider contacting. Assemblywoman Megan Dolly's office and seeing if we could arrange to have. Um, routine legislative updates here at the city council meetings and either, you know, like um, um. Quarterly, biannually, but just so that we can have some regular contact and put um. Uh, names to faces um, of her staff members. Um, and possibly arranging times so that the individual council members can meet with. Um, the assemblywoman's um, representatives, but I would really like to see that happen in twenty twenty-four. And I would hope that at least one other person would support me on that. I'd like to see that happen. And uh. I'm sure um, like. Many of you, I've received a lot of phone calls regarding um, the process for uh, the Prop two eighteen process. For in um, uh, the proposed rate increases for water and sewer. Um, I'm finding that there's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding that's circulating in the community. And um, a lot of that can just be attributed to people not knowing what the actual process is. Um, and so I've taken a lot of time to educate people individually um, on that process. And um, I think that we can look forward to a robust discussion. Uh, at our next meeting when when we have the public hearing on this, but um, I have been doing my best to educate people. Um, but people are gonna hear what they wanna hear. So um, I don't know if that's been um, the rest of the council's experience. And uh, other than that, that's, that's it for me tonight.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Baker. Councilman K.
Yeah, I just want to weigh in. Yes, I I've had a lot of discussion with a lot of individuals. So on the the twenty-first, our next meeting on this. Um, discussing this, we are gonna be voting on this too, correct?
Yeah, there'll be a actual, the determination and the vote, the vote count of the protest, and then ultimately. With that information, we will determine if we're moving forward with an ordinance, first adoption of an ordinance.
I just want some clarification on that, because that's that's what my understanding too. Uh, my big concern is, because I'm sure the rest of us have got the same concern or the same uh, phone calls and emails and stuff. Is the timeframe on it because of being November twenty-first, so close to the holidays, that a lot of people said that they're not gonna be able to. To be uh, um, in on this meeting. So there's been a lot of concern on a lot of constituents that they won't be able to participate in the meeting. Because of the the timeframe on it. So that's kind of my biggest concern on that is getting the the voices of the public heard. Um, if they're not gonna be able to attend. So I don't know if the rest of you have been getting that. I'm sure you have, but oh, really.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Um, I've been, I I have received that, but I mean, we mailed a notice out, what, three weeks ago? Um, to all of the rate. Um, user, all, you know, all of the people that um, get the service. And so I've just been pointing that out that they can. File a written protest anytime prior to and up until the the public hearing. So that's kind of how I've been responding.
I have too, uh, uh, obviously the same thing. Um, a lot of them were a little confused on how to do the proper written protest though. Um, that I've had, I've gotten that too, on how that should be proceeded forward with it. But in any case, that's, we're gonna have that discussion on. November twenty-first, so that'll be good. Um, meanwhile, I did our um, our C O C meeting like. Mr. Ledbetter stated, um, it was very disheartening when um, he's asking for help. From um, the county basically, and they put up a fence the next day. That's for all the hard work that we've been trying to work together on. That was pretty much a slap to my face. Um, so it's very hard to swallow, and I was very upset about that one. Um, because we're supposed to be working together as a team and not not against each other. So. That was not a good one. But anyways, we had the C O C meeting. Um, we have some updates. Not a lot on the going on and update wise, point in time count, we're still kind of limbo, because we said that we're just working on. Um, the procedure on the the forms that we're doing. There's a lot of procedure things going on on the point in time count, because it's been thrown on us as a city. City of Way Rika's lap, because I guess we're the ones that take on everything now, whether it be the county or everything that gets thrown on our lap. So we're handling it and we're dealing with it. Um, thanks to actually Madeline Bryan there at at the county. She's helping me. Handling the P I T committee and doing that and moving forward. There was a lot of questions that. Um, Shasta County was handling, and now they're out of the picture. Um, we have actually United Way is now a member of the C O C, voted them in. Um, because the main reason why they want to be a part of it, because after the first of the year. They will be handling the H M I S, which is the Homeless Management Information System, which is nationwide. On tracking what services uh, homeless individuals are receiving, so they're not double dipping. And to actually make sure that they get hooked up with the proper services to help them in their circumstances. Uh, let's see, what else? We have a presentation from Disability Action Center by Wendy Longwell, which is amazing. Some of the things they do. Some of the programs they do, um, I'm not gonna get into it right now, but they do a lot of different things, and they're a small organization that. I mean, from handing out food to, I mean, you name it, they're they're doing it. They're actually giving counseling and handing out food. They're doing, I mean, all sorts of different things. Really amazing um, um, pro- programs that they have going on. Um, public engagement, we had a lot of discussion on that in the past on public engagement. And the biggest thing and and was brought up on public comment on part of that was getting the information out to the public. On how to be a part of our meetings. Um, so one of the things is updating our our website was one of the big things, because it's. The C O C doesn't have a very easily accessible um, website. So that's one of the things that they're working on. But the main thing on the public engagement is just getting it out to the public on what's going on, like what. All these different organizations are doing, and that's been the key thing there, because there are a lot of people don't think anything's going on. That we're just having these meetings in secrecy and and nothing's getting resolved, but that's not true at all. There's a lot of organizations we're moving forward and getting some stuff done. Like I said, anybody that ever wants to have a discussion on some of these things that we're doing. Then I'll be more than happy to take the time and discuss with them, the shelters, the crossroads, that's apartments, the. You know, all the different things that we're we're working on and hopefully that will stay engaged with the county on doing. They're still willing. Um, but anyways, thank you for your time, and that's all. Just leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman K. Councilman McCoy.
Um, I want to uh, first thank uh, Research Center for being here tonight and bringing the Read Across uh, book. That is called um, Pig, the Pig, the Bug Winner, I guess. Um, I have not read it yet, but I'm gonna look at it tonight, and then I'm reading tomorrow with um, the um, state preschool. On Child's Way, and I look forward to it. I've done it at Gulf at uh, Evergreen for four or five years, and I would have done it anyway, because that's just the teacher and me. Um, so I want to thank that. I want to thank the county office. They had um. After, an after, after school celebration last week. And what happened was every one of our, I think every one of our schools and our districts in. Way Rika have a K through eight, I mean, excuse me, in Siskiyou County have a K through eight after school program. Over at this school, it's called Save Siskiyou After School for everyone. It might be called that, the others. We traveled to three schools, Delphic. Grenada and Evergreen. It was a wonderful program. I've seen it before. Because I, I had it for seven or eight years when I was principal and vice principal over here at Jackson Street. It's a great uh. It's, it's a good program. The kids get an opportunity to have structured homework time. They have structured physical activity time. They have structured mental activity time, lots of art and just other stuff and games and things like that. Whether it's a board game or chess, uh, or whether it's um. You know, it's not dodgeball, but outside playing pickleball or basketball and stuff like that. So I want to thank the Siskiyou County Office of Education for um. For allowing me to go. Uh, it was, it was great. I I've been out of education for thirteen years. I've been retired, so it was good to go back and see. Uh, well, a lot of the kids that I had talked with now directors of the of the programs or working in the program. So. Um, so those two things are wonderful. Stay connected to the schools. Um, I'm gonna just, uh, I'm gonna a shout out. To everybody in the office and Public Works especially, and Y P D. Um, we had a, we had a couple of parades that went down without a hitch, even when parade routes were changed. After they've been established. That's, people don't understand, I don't think the average person, myself, being the average person, understands. Uh, how dangerous it is when you're marching, um, when you're marching, um, you know, two or three hundred kids that are from four years old to seven years old. Uh, I also don't understand how dangerous it is when you've got thirty kids either standing in the back of your pickup or on a trailer. And they're coming. And so Y P D and Public Works did their best to clear the streets, to be able to hold people back. Um. So like I said, it worked, it went well, it, folks occasionally. Like at the beginning, they kind of changed the routes and then Y P D and Public Works has to scramble. So thank you all for for everything you guys did and Matt too. And finally, I'm gonna ask you for something. I agree wholeheartedly with the councilwoman on getting our state involved. In, uh, because I think it helps us in a lot of areas. We go to the state and say, hey, we've got a homeless issue here and we need some help. I I know help would be in probably in the form of money or support or something. But the other thing that I would like to ask, and I don't want to blindside you on it. But I would like to see a monthly update, either at our, at our last meeting or our first meeting of the month. From code enforcement, and you know, not for the chief, doesn't have to come from the chief. Um, what our priorities are for that particular month. And I'm speaking more towards. Blighted commercial properties. We have a lot of them. I know that we've talked about a vacancy tax, and that's actually something that Mr. Love uh, has brought to our attention. Year, two years ago, probably, I don't know. Um, but a- again, trying to regenerate the business section. Um, but it'd be nice to, if if like code enforcement, you know, a couple of people could go around and look at the different. You know, areas at the beginning of the month, spend a couple hours in and go, well, these are gonna, these are ones we're gonna focus on this month. And that, hopefully that list will change from month to month, because hopefully we can help the people that own the buildings to, you know, try and. Fix whatever's going on. So I would like to see that as a monthly report here, and I don't want to put another thing on the chief's. Blake, because I think there are other, you know, there are other people that 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 do it, so. I'm sorry if I hit you blind. I just was, I've been thinking about it as I drive around. Didn't mean to hit you or the chief blind on that. Thank you. I'm done.
All right. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Members of the council. Um, because two council members talked about some of the issues relating to the upcoming. Um, water um, rate hearing. Um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to kind of dispel one of the rumors that's been floating around. There was illusions made to rumors and so forth, and that has to do with uh, protest letters. A lot of people are calling this a ballot. It's not a ballot. Um, it's a a protest hearing, um, where uh, in order to um, for the the. The people to um, speak on this and defeat them uh, the the action. Um, they can, as a majority, uh. Express their will by protesting, and if a majority of the um, the accounts associated with the rate. File a letter that has these four components, and these four components are very important. The um, that is a, the the letter must state, written protest must state. That is a protest against the proposed charge that is the subject of the hearing. And it must have the name of the record owner or customer of record who is submitting the protest. Um, third, it needs to identify either by the um, assessor's parcel number. Um, the street address or utility account number of the parcel on behalf of which that protest is being made. And fourth, an original signature and legibly printed name of the record owner or the customer of record who's submitting the protest. And there was a question earlier this week, uh, and a kind of a rumor floating around that a ballot. Um, needed to be submitted with the notice that that was a different type of charge under state law. And instead, a um, e- either a property owner or a rate payer. Um, may submit what I've just described. There are those four things. And those, all of these procedures are, were adopted by the council and Resolution uh, twenty twenty-three forty-six. Back on, I believe that was October third. Um, yeah, October third, um, will adopt that. The procedures are right there. It's in black and white. It's it's already been done. Um, to adopt the procedures, those four things need to be in either a letter or. Um, staff has put that all together in a um, a a form letter. That is on the city's website and available to be used and just plug in a few things. that is on the city's website and available to be used and just plug in a few things, sign it, drop that off prior to the close of the public hearing, and it will be tabulated um at that time.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Jared. Appreciate that. All right. Um, yeah, I I haven't really heard from anybody really um regarding that, but I'm just I've read some stuff. One of the misconceptions is is uh that I saw, which I shouldn't chuckle, but a lot of people think that the fee for water is to help pay for our sal- salaries and people's salaries in the city. Um, and we're just doing it to get more money for us because the economy is down and everything, so um, they don't know that we can't use funds for water to pay for our city staff. And so they think we're just raising it to give everybody raises here. So that was one thing I read, which was like, so it really pays for our public to come to our meetings and listen to what um you know, our funds are allocated for and why why it has to be done. It's not to pay. But anyways, um, thank you for this, um, Councilman Baker. I, you know, after looking at this, you really I mean, as we're locals, we kind of forget how beautiful um Call Your Rest Area really is, you know. We'd um forget the beauty in our backyard sometimes, and Call Yours is um definitely a one of a kind um rest stop because it's um, you know, looking at this picture, it's gorgeous. So thank you for bringing that and um sitting on that board. Um, let's see, of course, I've met with um Mr. Ledbetter. I be with him every Friday, as a lot of us do. Their management meeting, discuss what's moving forward. Um, thank you, Councilman uh McCoy for bringing up the um enforcement, cuz we did talk about how we're gonna be moving to um bringing some of our older commercial buildings that are looking pretty bad um to bring back the vibrant and the pride our town once had, and it's um, there's a few buildings. I'm not gonna pick on anybody right now that when I drive by, I'm very disgusted. And um I'm tired of looking at them, and it's making our town looked very um very sad. And so I would like about the report, I like to, you know, hear from all the council members what the priority is, and you know, we've um beefed up hiring a uh you know, to have the code enforcement and also give them the tools to um as far as a law firm to move forward. So we need to utilize that and really uh move forward and um complete these tasks that we've talked about for a long time and um not forget about what our vision was all of us sitting here and me included to say, you know, I know we're gonna look like bad people and we're gonna be picking on people, but it's what we're hearing from our citizens. They're tired of driving by and seeing these um, some of these buildings boarded up weeds over them. Um, what have you, and um even residents, I'm not gonna pick on businesses, but and we've done a few of them, and we've had a lot of praise about some of these places that have, were just very poor condition that nobody should have been living in. But anyway, so um let's, I wanna continue that, so hope we do. So thank you for bringing that up. Um as Molly stated, I was asked to be on a panel for um the United Against Hate Week on a panel on the eighteenth at the library. So I'll be sitting on a panel for discussion, and there is the author of the book that is bringing the film. And so we will be having discussion, and so I'm excited to attend that and meet the author and um review the film that day and have a discussion about the hate that does go on. You know, not only here in Siskiyou County, but all throughout California, everywhere really, that has escalated. So I was um honored to be asked and um look forward to participating in that. Um it's been a little, since we haven't met in a while, so it's been a little quiet, but for me personally, you know, um I've been moving, so I'm exhausted. I feel a disarray. I feel lost, but I'll get there. But as anybody knows, moving is not fun. And I was rushing to get cleaned up and get here cuz just the last bit of my, to be out of my house, and the lady was wa- wanting to move in and rushing and thinking, oh, it won't be no problem. And we lived in a place for five years, and you're figuring like you keep going and going and going and going, and I was rushing to get here. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I almost canceled for the first time. I haven't missed a meeting in three almost three years of I counseled or being a mayor, I've missed a meeting. I was about ready to counsel cuz I was just feeling overwhelmed. And but I'm here, so it's been a busy time for me personally as well, so um and a lot of things going on. It's just hard to believe. And on top of that, my family thinks it was great to plan Thanksgiving at my house when I'm in boxes and it's only a few weeks away. So, yeah, we might be going out to eat. But anyways, um, thank you everybody for coming. Um, thank you, everybody, and um we will see you soon. Have a good evening.